You have to.
Oh, seriously?
In your folder.
I have.
Yeah, like an envelope in which.
Let's do it.
Perfect. I mean, you can.
And then. You came.
Perfect, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I can't. That car. The lady doesn't. Wait, what? That. Didn't have to. Oh, good. That is a terrible class. The Thursday one? Wow. Yeah, we haven't been moved out. We're on the waitlist for Wednesday, so we're still there for a while. Although they thought. Start doing. Yeah. Oh, my. After. To make things better. So anything that you'd like to do?
No. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I can let you know where you want to voice. And you're. Is, uh. They can. You got a sticker. It's always. Sure. And. Yes, it's from this. I don't know how many. So I got signed up. It's like.
Yeah.
Or sixty years. As they get older, it gets longer. Even if I had a little. So she becomes. Because you walk around with them and tell them. Oh, they don't do that? They. Well, but to do with the parent or the kids until they get into the three seasons. I feel like she would enjoy that, having me there for this. Well, she will. And then. She'll have me. Yeah. I don't know. You've been. But doing herself, like, pretty busy to go on to, like, find himself because he's been doing this. Today.
All right, five thirty-one, and I will call this regularly scheduled meeting of East Town and Board of Trustees in this session. And the first item under we're attending is our political leaders.
My flag is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, your free and sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, one and all, for joining us this evening. We've got some, uh, really special news that we didn't get to share, and then we've got some, uh, some pretty crucial board meetings and business meetings, but, uh, that is a good point, man, so. Uh, for the board this evening, we have the standings agenda. Are there any questions or comments from the board on said agenda? And I would like to point out that, uh, Brooke Harris, our student rep, will not be joining us tonight, so she will not be around, and, uh, Karen Howard, our, uh, technology guru, he had to leave to take care of an issue over at the high school. So he will not be, uh, reporting, but other than that, uh, are there any comments on the proceedings agenda? Okay. Saying that, we'll go on to hear the public, this opportunity for the public to address the board on non-adjourn items in the back or on the back of the proceedings agenda, our guidelines for the public to address the board on chosen non-adjourn items. So at this point in time, if anybody would like to address the board, I'm hoping them to do so. Saying that, we'll then move on to our regular reports, and as I said before, the student report will not be provided, so then we will go on to item number two, which is our teacher recognition, and I can be.
Yeah, so Jen Warner is here. She is a recipient of a very prestigious award. Um, I had shared the news with the board earlier, but I asked her to come and be formally recognized by the board for a moment, and I asked Brandon to give a brief introduction, just talk a little bit about Jen and her recognition.
Yeah, so awesome to have, this is Jen Warner and her family and crew over here. Uh, always cool to celebrate kids, definitely cool to celebrate staff members. So if you're not familiar with what the PMS is, it's a Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science and Teaching, and there's a lot of things that I personally appreciate about this is Warner. Uh, to the top of those, it's just her intentionality and instruction, and it doesn't really matter if she's planning a big lesson around IFA, or if she's just handing out some goldfish and telling kids to find different ways to make five and really working on their percentages. I just really appreciate that. Every moment in her classroom is a moment for kids to learn, so just excited to have her here, celebrate her, she's one of the very few recipients of this, and we're so pretty excited to have her part of our district.
Well, on behalf of the board, congratulations, and I believe, even though we don't typically get recognition to those individuals that are outside of our district, I believe that your husband, uh, actually has a similar award that was granted, so, um.
That's very uncommon.
Yes, it is.
And I had great teachers growing up.
Absolutely.
Doing that? No, it's really, uh, really special, uh, great to have two fabulous educators work with us here in the Helena area, and just congratulations to you guys.
And your children don't stand a chance, right?
You got student of the month today, too.
All right.
Well, congratulations, it's a great award, really appreciate that. So now, have you gone to, um, DC yet, or is that still pending?
It's still pending, yeah, so they, we don't know anything yet, um, on that. Hopefully soon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any, any, uh, questions from the board?
Yeah, just congratulations, thank you so much for all the hard work, appreciate it.
Okay, well, now move on to our administrators' report, and first under, I'll play it, Brandon, Brandon, tell us what's going on in our two younger schools.
All right, so, uh, in my board packet, I talked a lot about some of the bigger days to get just kind of one of our practices as we get halfway through the year, highlighted some of our current numbers for kindergarten registration and little aunties, obviously, having the parents or family is one of the highlights for our schools. And then just the other additional thing that is kind of cool going on is originally, all of our second graders were going to get participated going up to the Crumble Dixon Campground by MacPass, doing this snow showing event this week, which we were very excited about, but tomorrow, the name is called for a little bit, so we won't be doing that. But the cool thing is the company that some of our folks are working with have been very gracious to bring the activity to us, so tomorrow, they're going to come over, work with former classrooms, we're going to do some in-class stuff, teaching kids about camel logic and different animals and some other cool science-related activities, and then if the weather cooperates for a little bit, we're going to get the kids outside to try some snowshoes and just kind of trek wrap a little bit, just so they can see what it's like to put snowshoes on, walk through snows and stuff like that. So just a really cool opportunity that we don't have to do all the time.
Great. So are there any questions? Saying that, yes, tell us what's going on with Brandon.
All right, so I just wanted to expand on a couple of things on, uh, on my, uh, board report that I provided for you. Uh, your visual of, uh, a couple visuals that we had from our benchmarking assessment didn't show up great, so I just kind of wanted to explain them to you. Uh, we use the eye writing benchmark assessments on both math and reading, and they provided us with a new report based on national norms, and I provided the math and reading one, and so it separates, the graph separates into four quadrants. Um, ideally, you would love for all of your students to be in the high performance, high growth quadrant, um, and you'll notice in our median report that all three grade levels of both math and reading end up in that high performance, high growth quadrant, and how you get there is if you're in the fiftieth percentile or above in the national norms, and then in the Y-axis or X-axis, if you're above, making your fifty percent towards your yearly growth. So it was really cool to see, um, our median, um, performance, um, of our students in that high performance, high growth quadrant in both math, so our kids are working hard, teachers are working hard, and it's, the results are showing, so really nice to see that.
Great. Any questions for guests?
We are finishing up this test hopefully this week and next week. Um, it stresses the teachers out a lot because it's like a very short window to have your kids master something and then retest them again, so I just keep saying, like, this is a great data point for us to do what they know, so we will be coming to a close next week with math, um, girls basketball ends this week. I think our last game is this week, so we will, we will not have any active after-school sports for a while with the Tell Track, and other than that, we are surviving indoor recess with middle graders because we're.
So in that same way, my.
Speaking of indoor recess. No, so, uh, yeah, just looking at the numbers for the year, for the month, I know in, uh, Janu- January board meeting, I just kind of alluded to reteaching those expectations coming back from break, that's just kind of where this data is, um, when you look at it. Um, seventy-four across for the month is pretty heavy, but I don't eat it when I look and see the sixty of those who are addressing the classroom by talking to teachers, um, reteaching, um, those behaviors in the classroom this month. So, yeah, I, it's, it's heavy in the classroom, but I appreciate our teachers for, um, recognizing those behaviors, addressing them, and reteaching them.
So do we have any questions for middle school? Just wanted me to come, and I noticed in your report, actually, we are talking about the behaviors, is talking about cracking down on the poor language on the playground, et cetera, and that your numbers might be a little bit higher, but, yeah, you might be focusing a little bit tighter on things, and I've been watching legislature, legislative session a bit, and you'll hear a lot of legislators talking about the doctrine of broken windows, and they'll utilize that as far as buildings and things of that nature, but it just dawned on me as I was reading your report, that's exactly what I'm seeing in this, uh, with not getting broken windows, if you don't know, it's just where, if you've got a broken window and you don't fix it, the damage tends to continue to occur within that same building. Well, it sounds to me like that's exactly what you're doing with disciplinary actions in the school, and so I do appreciate that, and I think that that's going to provide a lot of benefits to the teachers.
And we live from a lot of majors on current year, and now it looks like a lot of items, but they're lighter than they were, so we're excited about that.
Well, it could be very easy to tell us just based on that because they're not majors or something. It's more shit, I don't know. Okay. Any other questions, comments from our original founding of the school? Okay. Paul, tell us about high school.
Yeah, um, yeah, you got my report there, um, a lot of it, uh, is based on two to seventy care members, we're going to talk about it later on. Um, just one thing I want to mention that kind of happened in the last week on Thursday, and this is sort of part of the Student Advisory Council, which is kind of a group that I, I meet with once a month, and not the Student Council, they're just kind of advising on different things, I mean, we're in a sort of very similar to kind of like Parents Council. We, we met last Thursday, and, and they came up with a really great idea, it was Haley and Angel, it was, and I only come with a great idea, and that was basically to recognize all the students, um, at, at different, um, periods, uh, through the three seasons, and so we tried that on Thursday, and so we had, um, basically to recognize the people that done anything, any students that done anything in the community, um, which we thought, you know, was a cool thing, and so it was, it was really nice because the, the, you know, the people, the, the kids got to see what other kids were doing, you know, we had ice hockey, we had English classes, we looked up, um, Haley did the blood drive, so all that stuff was kind of recognized, and that was, and I thought it was a really positive thing, we'll hone that a little bit more for the spring, but we'll do the same thing, we'll recognize kids that are doing stuff, you know, not necessarily in school, but just doing really good stuff in the process, um, which is really nice.
Any questions from Paul? Okay.
I know, I like leaving.
There, there.
All right, you have my report in front of you, um, one of the biggest things to highlight is we went over the expectations, um, that we really needed to focus on as a staff during the first couple of days of the new semester, so a schedule was sent out of what pages in the handbook to review and things to really focus on, and it was a little bit different than the beginning of the year, just because we really wanted to make sure we focused on the things that we were struggling with, which is attendance, uh, and tardies, and so a good chunk of that first class period, everybody was reviewing the ten-day absence section in our handbook, and what happens when we get to the eleventh day in the classroom. So it was really great to see, um, our teachers going through and looking at that handbook and going over that information with the students. We also did a comparison of the referrals that we've had this year versus last year, that's the bottom part of our report, you can see we're still trimming down our rules, um, and like Mr. Kimber mentioned, we're seeing things mostly related to minor issues, we're not seeing the big explosive behaviors or the suspensions, and so it's, it's really nice to see that what we're doing in our class is teaching those expectations, following up on those expectations, it's really hitting a lot of our kids, um, and really making sure that it's that small portion of kids that we've got to address, but it's getting smaller and smaller as we're getting through this school year.
Great. So do we have any questions for high school representatives? Appreciate your part. Sean?
Well, I want to highlight the, uh, five things in the past that they adjusted last month, the per-grade participation and currently self-education, no school basketball, and going to high school at the same time. Uh, N H S A award, going away from a hundred dollars in non-monetary compensation to five hundred a year, first student. Uh, amateur rule, a student can now profit from their innate memories of likeness. Uh, bylaws remain that three games of suspension, each spectator is ejected from a contest starting next year, which is a good one, and the other in the past is physicals are now just every two years instead of every year.
Okay. Any questions for Sean on the N H S A, your output? Got a couple, Sean, on the eighth grade participation, the way I read that, I wasn't sure if I understood it correctly. If a child is participating in the sport of eighth grade, then they're allowed to participate in that same sport at the high school level as well.
For N H S A, yes.
Okay, so one of the issues that they used to have was that they were concerned of eighth graders playing, uh, high-level contact sports, uh, that would jeopardize the safety of somebody that was small or select, football, for instance, they didn't want an eighth grader playing varsity football even though the rules said that they could, um, was there any thought, or what was?
Football's not allowed.
So, okay, so what it says in there, it just any sport.
Oh, yeah, football's not, it's not allowed.
Okay, so in those types of laws.
Yeah.
Perfect. And then, uh, secondarily, uh, what was the thought process on limiting the, uh, physicals to every two years as opposed to a single?
They're hoping to go away from the, uh, push of mass physical, make those, you know, actual doctor, get them more thorough physical.
Okay.
Um, hopefully, if they have some condition, they catch it, that's the main reason. Heard style, get a thousand kids through two hours.
But they're not changing the form or the requirement right now?
No, they're still going to get a more thorough physical.
So when you say hope, what kind of, what does that look like?
However you want, but, and we can, we can still offer that, or we can just encourage, the best thing is physical, I think, pretty much, like, if, like, you know, we do it for twenty-five dollars, but they can go to the clinic in Townsend still, but they'll do it for twenty-five there as well, uh, and then that money will still come back to the school, so, I mean, for us, we just want to make sure our kids get the best physical possible, to, you know, if they go to the regular doctor, do better, probably, so they get a better, you know, somewhere they're more comfortable with and, uh, more thorough.
I guess that's kind of where my concerns stem from, is that you've got, when we're talking to kids that is these ages, that should, physical changes happen a lot more quickly than once every two years, I think, so if they are going to identify something, um, I think that might be a.
I think if they have pre-existing stuff, they'd still be required every year, if their kids are physical, for some reason, because we have kids like that, if they have to get cleared medically anyways every year, we're trying to beat this one, so.
Okay, any questions, Paul? Thank you, appreciate it. How was the convention, by the way?
It was good.
Okay. And like I said, our technology, um, represented this, um, task, so we'll now move on to our trustee committee reports of the board, and we will, we'll have, I know there's been some insurance that back and forth, but I think it's going to happen.
Yeah, we didn't meet, um, we're waiting on the trust to come up with their proposals, the policy committee didn't technically meet, we emailed the portion of graduate around between us, we pulled the client, but there wasn't that convenient, and that's an agenda later, anyway. Um, it's a help, I don't think we have any other reports there, just named trustees, there's a two. Do the type of trustees have anything to report?
I just want to say we did have a board and directors meeting and discussion at N T S B A level, and so that was mostly just, uh, working towards, uh, the legislative advocacy that's going on, and, uh, there was the day on the hill, so, and I participated in that, made some good contacts for this, and sure. Hopefully, for this benefit that came across for, for our system.
And the March dance canceled, is that what I heard today?
Uh, I don't know if it's canceling on the day, I've been striking with dates.
Oh, maybe they're recent, it's. So the legislature won't be in session on the, but it was originally scheduled for March tenth, and now they're going to be in, what do you call it? Trans- transmitted.
Yeah, we would have been transmitted, so they're trying to, yes, they've been trying to, to, just to fit better, but, uh, that, that might not work out, so. Okay, um, moving on, there's no comments on that, we'll move on to our strategic planning and scanning for the district's future needs, and, uh, which is, any thoughts on that?
I only have, uh, two points to just bring up tonight, um, one is enrollment, if you saw the enrollment report that was in the supporting documents for tonight, we're pretty steady this year, which is, um, a nice change to see, um, a while back, we saw kind of a, a reduction in the number of students every month as the year went on, but, um, this, I think, is the second year where we, like, our winter numbers are almost spot on with our fall numbers, so, um, so that's been nice to see, it helps, uh, to kind of firm up our financial outlook as we try to plan for, um, for the, for the future. Uh, the, the other thing is, um, just to give you guys some data on the public library, um, so currently, their branch is, um, on Main Street, right by the creek, their, their Crosswalk Park, and they want, or feel like they need more space, they're prepared to, um, construct a new building in East Town area somewhere for the East Town and Branch Library. Um, they approached us about it last summer, um, maybe even last fall, um, we're basically curious as to if the district wants to slice off a parcel of land for the library to build a East Town and Branch on it. Um, we kind of looked over our different properties and, and considered what might be possible, um, because we always had a good relationship with the public library, um, teachers rely on it, uh, in the summertime, we use it a lot for summer school, so it's a good resource for us to have near our campuses, but we did have some issues, um, when we first built EBMS, when we had the public library in one of our libraries, and there were issues between our obligation to filter and protect students from what's on the internet net that they shouldn't be looking at versus the public library's philosophy, which is a free speech philosophy. Um, and so that's why they're not, that's part of why they're not in one of our libraries right now, um, but when we look at the property that we have and the growth that is kind of in East Town, it just doesn't make sense, I don't think, um, from a growth perspective, for the trustees to be selling off parcels to the public library when we might need that property someday in the future for a future school or expansion on the current sites that we do have. Um, so we kind of pulled back from that conversation, the public library approached the city, and this city council heard a proposal to do a study, is that what they were talking about there? Tuesday night, um, at city council, I wasn't able to be there, but I did submit, um, some commentary and support, um, of possible, um, study to, um, place the new branch of the library near the pool at J F K Park, is that?
West side of what town's courts are.
Okay. So that would be a nice location because it's close to our campuses, but not on our campus, it's, um, almost adjacent to our, to our property, so I don't really know where that is at, um, was it received?
Apparently, at least we'll be studying.
Okay. So the council member, at least we'll have to look at it, I wasn't able to go, so Sean, um, volunteered to go to the city council for me, and I really appreciate you going and doing that, uh, but if you hear anything about that, I think it's, uh, I feel like it's positive for the community, um, and it's, it keeps the library somewhat, uh, close to our current campuses, where if they were to look at some of the newer subdivisions, particularly like Habitat for Humanity, um, as a possible site for their relocation, um, it would put, basically, the idea of walking to the classic library for very long, it would be out of reach for all of our schools, so, um, just kind of something to keep in mind if you hear anything about it, and I think that's really all I have in terms of strategic planning.
Do any of the other board members have any thoughts?
I just have one question.
Yeah.
Uh, in the high school report, it was said that there's like a hundred and eighty freshmen coming in and we have a hundred and twenty seniors leaving, so is that class going to be extremely large and needing more teachers, if it was kind of common being the.
Yeah, we're, we're working through some of that right now, um, the, uh, um, the issue isn't just one of staffing, it's one of physical space as well and how to manage that, so, um, some of that in a high school, you have to manage just through scheduling, um, the other part is, um, do you look at having to reallocate staff as students move from one building to the next, and then, um, the other part is, yeah, we just need more teachers at the high school in order to be able to offer the elective that we want to be able to offer our kids, so, that, I think, um, what some of those options might look like, and some of it hinges on legislation, which I think is coming up next.
Will we have to cap that classroom, really?
I think that's one of the, the conversations that we're going to have to have, is what do we do about non-resident applications, we don't have a ton at ninth grade, um, unfortunately, it's one thing that we always can and have to consider is, do we ask the current non-resident kids who are attending here to not attend here anymore because of space issues? But, yeah, the, the high school's going to grow next year and the following year, and then it's going to be big for about another two years, and then it'll start dropping back down a little bit, um, which will come with its own set of pain, um, when we graduate those hundred and eighty-seven kids and we don't enroll a hundred and eighty-seven kindergartners, we have another problem, which is up called the nine-year enrollment, so, um, so we're looking into that crystal ball and trying to be prepared for different avenues, but, yeah, it's definitely a concern.
Is this one of the problems that we actually have to deal with?
This eighth grade?
Yes.
Yes, I, I just don't know how we just take more non-residents back to grade level, but I think we have, we're going to have to pull it here.
Any other questions, comments, insights?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, where, maybe this is inappropriate, but where are we at for, I mean, we're done?
Yep. Yep. And we'll, we'll get to test them out tonight. Well, they've been working good, we did lose the circulation from the Radley, but.
Okay. Any other thoughts, insights? If not, then we will revisit this or next week, we'll go on to there. Um, next thing that is on the agenda, that, and two is our reports on which we're going to say.
So I'm a, hopefully, you're more savvy than I am right now, I do know that House Bill fifteen is moving forward, and that's the inflationary investment that's right, um, one of the, uh, bigger bills that we pay attention to just because of how it impacts us, um, from a fiscal perspective, um, the other bill that seems to be cruising along fairly well so far, um, with not a lot of resistance is the Starz Act, which is at two fifteen.
What starts as two fifty-two?
Two fifty-two. Um, and as Scott was telling me, according to me, it passed on second meeting in the House of War, um, today, this afternoon, um, by a significant margin, uh, so it's got a long way to go, but it does seem to have a fair amount of momentum and support from a lot of different, uh, parts of the legislature, which is positive, um, so that will be, uh, those two bills together. So that will be, if those two bills together, if they go through, it will, will benefit us financially and, and keep us in pretty good shape. We'll be talking about it here in a little bit. The other bill that I was tracking a little bit was 320, and that's the, it is a tax credit bill. The thing that's got a lot of public education advocates concerned about 320 is that, if I'm understanding it right, a parent can unenroll their child from full-time status to just barely part-time status, so like a high school dropping a class. And that puts us in a situation where we stand to lose potentially 25% of the AMV for that child. And the family gains or the beneficiary donor donates to that child gains a tax credit of up to seven thousand dollars, is that what?
I got a little confused because businesses get two hundred thousand, just like the other ones with the others. It would just be based on like your tax liability, even on your rightful, so if you vote seven thousand dollars and stick it in the tax, you could give a seven thousand dollar donation and essentially zero that out.
You'd get a credit card, so the, I think the concerns with it are, first of all, there's, like, there, there could be a huge incentive for a lot of parents to cut back their child's enrollment to make them eligible for the credit. There, what I heard in the House floor testimony today was representatives that were concerned that there wasn't a significant amount of oversight as to who decides what ineligible expense is qualified for the credit. So you would kind of expect that an organization like OPI or Port Public Ed would be tasked with making those determinations. The way the bill's written right now, it's an independent commission that would make that determination. And the worst case scenario that comes out of that, and this is not at all in law or anything right now, would be, do we think that buying your child to see the pass at this area nearby is ineligible as an education expense for their physical education? And now you get a tax credit for that expense, which basically comes at the expense of all the other taxpayers in Montana. So I think that's what some of the concern is, is that there's still a lot of parts that aren't really very well aligned. And it was a super close vote, I think it passed by one vote.
Fifty-one to forty-eight.
Okay.
With one extension.
Yeah, so. So they're, it's back on third reading this week and it's just one to keep an eye on and then versus, so let's go to the Senate, make a move in the Senate. Those are the two big ones.
Yeah, there's, there's a few others that we should be probably be watching out for. One was Luke Mustavage, who was on board of directors of MTSBA. He, and this is his first term on the legislature, he's proposed a couple of inflationary bills, one of which would have automatically if the school district had a mail levy. It would have automatically increased that mail levy amount by the standard inflationary rate that the legislature was going or would be passing during legislative session. That failed this afternoon, or yes, on Friday, excuse me, seven to eight. So I mean, it was a very close vote with the House Education Committee. But it just really what it does is it prevents erosion of mail levies as you continue to go down if you had a mail levy, like our tech levy for instance, which is perpetual. Eventually we've seen before we passed the weapons of maybe ten years ago. And you do what, you see what the impact is of that tech levy. And it doesn't have as much impact as it did when it first not passed, so the district has the option of going in and trying to get a new tech levy passed or just be comfortable with the passage of, with the inflationary drop associated with it. So that was one that failed, it is tabled, but who knows what will end up happening with that. Another one that you had was House Bill 266, which would expand the amount of time that school, that the legislature utilizes in order to calculate their inflationary adjustment. Right now, it's essentially three years and they're trying to get that expanded to a little bit greater amount. So it's a wider spread or a wider view of what inflation actually is. So there might be a time where it might be seven percent one year, it might be two percent the other year. But depending on how those years are set up, the school districts may or may not get more unfair benefit. So this kind of evens that out. So those were the two, and that passed over one, that was fifteen, that one. But there's a couple of them that we should probably be a little bit concerned about. One is, and my positive one will end up happening, but there's a Senate bill up there that will require that associations such as MTSBA, SAM, MQDC, some of the associated, you know, the advocacy groups, would end up having to have all their meetings be open to the public. And that all of your minutes, all of your financial records, things of that nature would have to be open to the public. Since they are being subsidized or funded by association or by the school districts, which are taxpayer-funded, which makes perfect sense. And, you know, by the way the bill was written, is that it's any organization that has, that needs a benefit from the school. So if you think about that, that could be that groups like FAA, DECA, Booster Club, any of the, any of the associations that kids are going through would also be subject to those types of meeting rules. So they would need to be required to have the public be able to attend all their meetings. They would have to have minutes, that would need to be disclosed on websites, all, all sorts of things. And the problem is, is that the way that the bill is written, it is purposefully vague because they want to encompass as much as they can without realizing that there are perhaps some unintended consequences associated with that. So we're tracking that one fairly closely to see what happens. What they did was it was originally proposed to try to make sure that groups like MTSBA's dues formula and things of that nature were disclosed to the public. Anybody in the public that wants to know the MTSBA's dues structure is more than welcome to go ahead and contact them to find that information. It's not the MTSBA, SAM, I can't speak for SAM, but some of these others are pretty much open book, transparent. It's just whether or not you can ask the right person to answer the questions. There is another bill that is out there that is, would require, make sure I did it correct. But one it would mount to is that it would sunset mail levies and that are passed, which.
That's 204.
Is that 204?
204, 205 work together. One requires a revote, I think every 10 years.
Sunset, right.
And that applies to school districts, cities, towns, counties. The other one is the one with the minimum voter turnout, so I think 204 is the term. And I think 205 is like, if you have less than fifty percent turnout, then you have to have super majority on your vote. So let's say forty-five percent of your voters cast a vote in the election, then it's gonna require like a sixty percent majority for your issue to pass. So those are, once everyone, they're still alive, and I think that open meeting one might be dead, is what I heard.
The open meeting was dead, it, it, yeah, and the other two are still pending. I just said they had not been discussed within the Senate hearing, but. The one that frustrates me somewhat, I'll just do a personal commentary, is the super majority. One is that it used to be that if you get mail ballots, then therefore everybody, all registered voters within your district were given a ballot and then they could vote that ballot or choose not to vote that ballot. Where this bill, the way it stands, is that it no longer is the case that it's, that if you don't have that level of participation, then there's potential that you have to have the super majorities to get them passed, which philosophically, or you might only just make a lot of sense because if someone doesn't bother to vote, I mean, everybody has a right to vote, but then you also have a right not to vote. But that, you're not able to shake down to influence of that election, and this one does, but we'll see what ends up happening. There, there's a, there's a, quite a bit of discussion associated with that. And I need to editorialize on that, but that was just one that we.
What are the measures to control the forty-five percent of participation?
I hope we did that.
On school elections. Do you know what our participation rate typically is for a school election?
I don't think, I think it was like, that's the last time I think it, it was too low, the last year was very low.
I want to see that with, the biggest one that we had was the high school. And I think we still only got about sixty percent voter turnout for the high school votes, so. And I'm not a hundred percent, I think the high school would have voted or would have passed still, but it would have been very close, so. So that's what we have as far as, let's say there's a bunch of others that are still out there, and there are a weight to those. Any questions, comments on our legislative update? Saying that, we'll go on to donations for retirements and resignations.
Okay, we had five resignations there in the packet, three paraprofessionals, a custodian, and one of our teachers, Will Sullivan and Radley, is looking at changing the path of her career just slightly next year, and so she turned her resignation early to get that process started. It's notable that we've lost, I believe, five paraprofessionals announced since Christmas. And that's really hammering our ability to serve all the kids that we need to serve at the level that they deserve. And there's an MOU later on the agenda tonight that, we talked about that, it's just to have a Band-Aid and try and help address that just a little bit, so. And those resignations have been accepted.
Any questions for Dan on the resignations or retirements? Saying that, we'll now go on to consent action plans before the board this evening, the half of the minutes of our January 13th meeting. Approval of our current formal warrants, personnel actions, and approval of our school district, out of district, student enrollment. Typically, there is a debate on consent action plans, however, a new member of the board wishes to do so. They can ask if how the plan will grant consent action, having to be, be debated separately. Otherwise, they can take a motion to accept consent action plans as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Okay, I have a motion, do we have a second? Second, all those in favor of the motion, please signify to say aye. Aye, all those opposed, let's say no. Motion carries. And I'm going to add finish this, and the first item is our day treatment services within children's shelter.
Okay, this is the contract we looked at last month. I did not put the entire contract in the supporting docs, I just put the immediate in there so that you could see that. The big things that we addressed were in paragraph five, where it uses a little bit stronger language as to what the district's responsibility is if a family doesn't pay. The, so they added language like the district will be the payer of last resort. And costs related to any other special education related service costs, so it's not like it's as wide open, I think that we're on the vote floor. I, like I said last month, I don't think this is something that's really gonna come into play. Because most of the students that we refer are qualified for day treatment are gonna be able to afford Medicaid and private pay insurance. So this would be a pretty rare situation. The, there's some other changes. Yeah, so that's, that is on, in the, the contract itself, I think it's on page two, and that's the, so the two things we have to do is decide if we're gonna approve it or not, and then set the end date. If we set it for June 30th, 25, we'll be looking at it again next summer. I, I feel like if we want to get this going and are comfortable with it the way it sits, we should approve it for, to be in effect through, through 2026, and ICH was perfectly okay with that. So those are the, the two, the two things we look at.
I think there are other changes in the board.
Yes. So there, we just wanted to detail.
So the one you really caught my attention was, it says, you're not consenting to insurance, though. Like if they're gonna do the program, we're always getting parents.
Right.
But then we're, they need, if they're on, it's.
Okay, in my mind, we would back off that, that would be, here, obviously it's not going forward. Not on board, that it's not gonna be a parent's, just anywhere.
Are there any other concerns, thoughts? The only thing that I got is receiving the editorial stuff that we started getting into. Page one, it says it's entered into this date, January 13th, 2025, effective January.
Oh, that was leftover from last one.
Right. Terms of termination, it says through and then the date is blank, and I'm sure that's, we're going to establish that. And exhibit C, there again, it's an effective date listed on that. There was an error, it's a footer, I said B for some reason, I don't know what that is. But it calls it out as exhibit A, even though it's exhibit B, because that's just a, somebody was a little bit bored this afternoon, so. So those are just high school things that I've been working to do as far as people, we're all. Any other thoughts, concerns, ideas on the ICH contract? So at this point, Dan, if that's the case, I'm gonna take a motion to approve the agreement with Intermountain Children's Home for service contract to have an internal date of June 30th, 2026.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion, please second through the panel. Any further questions, comments from the board? Questions, comments from the public? Saying that, all those in favor of the motion, please signify to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up on the list is our portrait for the graduate.
Okay, so I put the revised version in the supporting docs. What we did was, or we said we emailed it around. Everybody had their notes from last month's board meeting about things that they wanted to clear up, mostly to try to make it more concise and to align the language. Some of the things that we kicked around were that the, the terms around the vigilante logo in the center are the universal behavioral expectations for East Allen High School that the staff and the behavior committee has set for all students attending the school. We want students to be engaged, we want them to be responsible, we want them to be respectful, and we want them to graduate. Those terms are worked into this portrait as responsible as the header at the top left and engaged in the header at the top right. And under responsible, the number four bullet is respectful, so we feel like we covered those behavioral expectations. And then the language here is that we want our graduates to be responsible, engaged, thoughtful, leaders. Those are the four main terms, and that's kind of how that came together. We had a lot of good comments, I will just confess that Martin did the lion's share of work on this, he took it and. He took it and worked it over and revised it and then sent it back to everybody. We felt like it was in pretty good shape at that point, but Brooke and Paul and Trish and I sat down. We did change that bottom right-hand corner back to be a leader so that it would flow that way. And that was and then we sent it back out to the whole committee. Everybody felt pretty good about it. At this point, it's in front of you for approval. Once it's approved, it needs to be posted on our website. I'm going to ask the principals to include it in their student info's at all levels. And it'll get submitted as part of our accreditation packet for our year two accreditation.
Okay. So before before the board this evening, we have our portrait of the graduate approval. And so I'm going to take a motion to approve our portrait of graduate.
Motion to.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, second. Portrait again. Portrait of the graduate document. Any additional questions, comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public?
So like on the logo, it says like graduate, engaged, responsible, respectful. Are you going to re-label those with thoughtful, leader, responsible? I didn't catch your question. Okay, so like on the logo itself, it has being a graduate, being engaged, responsible, respectful. Are you going to replace those terms with like the updated ones like responsible? No, so the outside part of I think is an expansion of the core behaviors or beliefs. Yeah. That's I think that's the way we want to look at it.
We thought about like putting a graduate in a different spot, highlighting yours a little bit, just the outer spot. All together, like doing a graduate, I mean, this one, the guy.
Three.
The three birds.
And.
I don't know. That's my only thoughts.
We can we can keep working on it.
I keep looking at it. It just bugs me a little bit.
Yeah. And we can just.
Not my. If the kids are happy.
Well, it does.
I mean, birthday for infants.
I mean, and I think that the board is really pretty much approving the content as opposed to the.
Graphic design.
Graphic, yeah. So I think that it's more crucial.
Not permission to be to be a graphic designer.
But this is something that is required.
Yeah.
By the office of public instructions.
Yeah, my understanding is we'll be looking at it again every three years from here on out. Just a week.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any kind of questions or comments from the public? Saying that, all those in favor of the motion to approve the portrait of the graduate document, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Okay, next up is our budget update and projections.
Yeah, so there's a page in the supporting docs. I asked Brandon to go make some copies for most of the group that may not have access to it. What we're looking at at this stage in the game is still kind of preliminary numbers. We do not have our budget worksheet from OPI, which is a very complex and expansive Excel spreadsheet that we plug our numbers into it and tells us what our minimum and maximum budget would be. And honestly, that OPI is working to have those budget worksheets. We just pass them around. They're working to have those budget worksheets by March first, but even if they are, I just feel like there's going to be legislative changes that will adjust it after that point in time. So please keep in mind that these are preliminary, very preliminary projections. At the top of the page at the left-hand side, when we are looking at what's called their projected budgetary increases, those are pressures that we see coming our way in the general fund budget. And they're understandably mostly in the way of salary increases for staff that have already been negotiated. Potentially an increase for inflationary costs for the items listed there like textbooks, fuel, utilities, bumping up some of those line items. And then our best guess estimate of what our health insurance increase might be. Look, we have changed those estimates a little bit. We're real. I looked at it. We're still pretty comfortable with those. We're guessing and hoping that they're a little bit higher than the actual cost is going to come in. But it's a little easier this year for us to look at that because we've done negotiations. We know what salary schedule looks like. We know how many teams we have. We know what the increases are going to look like for classifieds down. On the right-hand side is the top is our current general fund budget for twenty four, twenty five, fourteen million, one hundred seventy two thousand. We are guessing there in the first line that just based on increase A and B, our budget, if nothing else changed in the in the spreadsheet, that we would be looking at a budget next year of about fourteen million, six hundred forty seven thousand. One of the things that we know that are moving fairly quickly through the legislature, board laws that are already on the books, are the three percent inflationary increase, which is not really a three percent increase for us. It really amounts to about a two point five five percent increase because we're not at a hundred percent of the cap. So we factor that in a little bit less than three percent. The other changes that we're benefiting from going into next year is Jump Start, which is the summer program authorized by the Liberty Liberty Program from the twenty twenty three legislature. So for every student that qualifies and participates in our summer school program now, we get a point two five A and B for that child. So we factored that into this number. And then the other thing that we factored into that number is we're going to see a loss next year from this year in terms of our base aid for the middle school two two seven academy. And that's that letter we looked at back in the number. If you go back to the enrollment sheet, we still are not at twenty students in seventh and eighth grade. We actually would have had to get twenty seven in order for the A and B to come in at twenty and qualify for that. So that's about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar hit from what we what was in our general fund budget this year. So the and the other thing that's factored into there, and we actually recalled from OPI about this last week, and it was kind of a painful conversation and even more painful memory, is our number of MTE reported staff that opened last year was a hundred and thirty four. This year is a hundred and twenty seven, and that's based solely on the fact that because the levy failed last year, we had we made cuts in staffing. We didn't lay people off, but we eliminated different instructional positions across the board. And so the loss of seven quality educator payments, that turns into real money. It's about twenty four thousand dollars that we're not going to receive this year based on what we got this year. Long story short, though, that puts us at a potential increase, potentially seven hundred eighty seven thousand. And keep in mind that this is a guess and a projection at this point, an educated guess, but still a guess. So when we look at our anticipated increases on the left-hand side of six hundred twenty seven thousand that are that we're going to have to pay out next year in additional wages and health insurance costs versus the potential increase that we see from the state. I'd say we could reasonably say that we probably don't have to run the levy this year. Now, between now and March, some of the things that we're going to have to consider are things like high school staff. Do we have to consider that? The other and other pressures and programs that we might want to add back. The other wild card that's playing out there is Stars Act. And the fact that Stars Act is basically engineered to try to restore school districts a little bit back to the lost ground that we have from four years of inflation. And so what we're going to have to wrestle with is what will the increased money from the Stars Act look like? And how do we want to allocate that money in terms of trying to build back some of the things that we did in the last two years when we failed? So although the Stars Act is probably going to be a significant amount of money, and I do think it's worth saying that there are certain benchmarks that districts have to hit to even qualify for the additional money that's included in the Stars Act. And we're in good shape because we've already qualified for that, both in terms of our starting pay and the percentage that our starting pay is of our average pay. A lot of districts are not in that situation. They're having to do a lot of work to try to get themselves there. But the the bill itself is definitely engineered to increase starting teacher pay across the board in Montana. And it's dangling and carrot out in front of districts who are willing to step up and do that. Like I said, we've already reached that threshold and that benchmark. And so that's I guess breathe a sigh of relief from that. But what another way of looking at it is to our staff and stepped out of faith and the legislature and the governor are stepping in to help fill that void. So over the course of the next month, between now and March, we'll be looking at a lot of those things. At some point, maybe before the March meeting or sometime shortly after it, we may want to bring the board budget committee together to just meet and discuss why we're changing options within the district so that we've got some direction as to where we want to go. Because we've eliminated multiple positions over the last couple of years. And if we want to start building back some of that capacity and like we're saying at the high school, we need to just to have the seats in the classrooms for the children. We need to start advertising for staff no later than the middle of March in order to be attracting quality applicants because that's the high hiring season in Montana. With that, I think I'll kind of shut up and take some questions.
So the short all or two two seven numbers, we have to do that back?
We do this year, yeah. Yeah. We're waiting for the.
Have we ever heard how they're going to change that?
Yeah, they it's statute, so they can't really adjust it.
Unless we push like a legislation.
Right. And it would have to it would have to be due to funding. And there is legislation that's going to introduce this week to fund sixth graders at the high school level. But it still wouldn't fix this part of the funding code because this part of the funding code classifies sixth graders with elementary. And so that part of it would have to change. The good news is, just based on the kids that are in the two two seven right now, just moving up a grade next year, we'll hit those numbers next year, but we won't see that money back in our budget for until fall. And then we're just going to have to work harder on aligning that enrollment and making sure it's there. But yeah, it's it's actually a two-year hit that we pay back the money from this year.
But we're still paying for the sixth graders.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and we're getting their A and B money. We're just not getting the base aid, which is it's a complicated part of the formula, but it's a at middle school, it's a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar annual foundational amount in your budget is what it counts. I can drone on and on and on.
Any other questions from the board? One question up here. Just a curiosity question, probably should be asked. We brought it as answered at the last meeting. But we previously passed that driver's education reimbursement.
Yeah.
What type of work that will fund.
For the driver's.
For reimbursement, I said, but I know that.
Yeah. Jill and I will have to hunt around in some of our grant funds or I'd be confident that we'll have year-end money in the general fund to pay for it just due to vacancies for positions in our current budget.
So my next question is, as you got the list again, is one of your pleasure items or is that small enough?
Yeah, I. Worst case scenario, based on the way that MOU was written, I can't imagine that that's going to cost us more than in the five to ten thousand dollar range. So far, I don't have anybody who wants to do it, but I would have tried to do a Sarah Sandow score. You look at the. So, yeah.
You have to look at panic in your eyes.
Pushing on that ring.
Okay, if there's any other questions, I will move on and we'll revisit this during this meeting. So portrait of my virgin is our health insurance plan is still something.
So I wasn't exactly sure what you wanted me to tell you, but so currently we have one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, four ninety seven. And at this exact same time last year, we had one million, one hundred and fifty thousand, six nineteen. So we're not growing it like we want. The recommendation is to get it to four million as staff funded. But we have had four extremely high claims that have sort of hit us a little bit this year. And that all comes out of that, the the. I would say our claims, we have had some as high as seven hundred thousand in one week. But I would say it runs roughly about twenty five thousand. And two weeks ago, we had an eight thousand. So it kind of just goes in when the claims come in. And there's really not a whole lot we can do about that, unfortunately. So we're not growing it like we anticipated, but we're staying, I mean, we're still in a fairly good spot. It's not going down very close to losing it, but the the suggestion is that you need to get it to four million to be a healthy self. And we're not moving that way just yet.
Where are we now showing that you?
So currently, right now, we have one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, four ninety seven. And last year, we had one million, one fifty. So we're actually a little bit less than what we had at the same time last year. And so currently, so the last reports we got were in December. We have a hundred and sixty nine staff members that are electing to care medical and with their dependents and their spouses. There's two hundred and forty one people on the medical chart. And then there are a hundred and sixty seven staff members that chose the dental division. And there are two hundred and sixty eight with the dependents and spouses. So we have a pretty good pool of employees. And we only have about about thirty percent are taking up about ninety percent of. So. And we do have a very large population of employees that have that don't really use it.
So do you have to deal for whether that thirty ninety percentage is technical? Not necessarily for us, but just as just.
You mean the support. Um, that's a and the only thing I have to go on are past experiences, which were, you know, years ago, but that seems, no, that does not seem. Does not seem, but it didn't back then. But we have a very, we have a large group of young, healthy employees who don't use the insurance. So that's a good thing, right? Yeah. But we do have some very, very large claims and we do have some very, very high prescription.
But I don't know much. I don't want to push you on the spot because you, but do you have a.
Yeah.
I I think that that when you typically look at like claims overall, you have a small percentage of users that are the large larger amount of claims. I mean, not having specific numbers on like how many people reach the deductible, how many people don't. You know, all of those kinds of details will be a little bit more interesting, helpful on some of that.
We actually do have the deductible numbers that we got to.
Yeah.
To give to that.
Yeah, I think I saw that come across my email and stuff, but but so I think that helps. But but typically, yes, you will have. But typically, yes, you will have five percent of your population who are refusing, just five percent of-
Kind of the nature of-
Yeah.
It is typical in that regard.
And the reason I ask the question is that if they are asking us to have funded at four million dollar levels is because that's typically what they ask for. Going to be a trend here with what typically their claims are, so that we're comparing apples to apples.
You're never going to get apples to apples whenever you're talking insurance, but, but that four million dollar number is coming from, you know, the actuarial-
Yeah. They just didn't make it out.
That are, yeah, so.
You're just taking into account that there's just an astronomical claim, but a lot of that gets covered by our stop loss. And so I guess if we had too many, we would lose them, so it wouldn't cover us, but-
Yeah, so there's that potential. There's also when you get kind of caught in that mid-area where you don't have people using a lot of the smaller claims, but you don't have a lot of really like, you know, one catastrophic claim, but you have a large, ongoing stream of fairly large claims, and then that's when you start to breathe and get into some piece of trouble there.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions from the board? Thanks, Joe, I appreciate it. Appreciate the information. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. The fifth item is our reconsideration of 2025 calendar.
Okay. This one might be fairly easy, or it could be fairly lengthy, I'm not sure how it's going to go. When we looked at the calendar last, there was discussion about the spring break and the possibility of lining it up with Helena that certain people in the community, not necessarily even our own employees, had complained about the fact that our spring breaks were not aligned, and that it makes it so certain things that are available to Helena families during spring break, like special camps and activities for kids in certain sports, end up not being available to East Helena families during spring break because those organizations offer them during that time. So that was one factor. Another factor that impacts it is we do have employees who are affected by it, whose children attend school in the Helena district, but they themselves work in the East Helena district, which creates a mismatch in their time off. We really like to encourage teachers to plan their trips and vacations around the school calendar so that they're not missing work, and this creates a hardship for those teachers in that situation. It also creates a situation where the children in that classroom in our own district are now being taught by a sub because the teacher decides to take that time off to be with their children when they're out of school. So that was a discussion from last month, and after the meeting, I did reach out to Helena to see when their spring break was. I expressed some of these concerns that were discussed, and they responded that they were moving forward on the calendar that has spring break a week after the ones that we adjusted up. So with that in mind, we contemplated possibly bringing it back to the board. I asked Paul to check with the calendar committee to get their perspective, and can you report about what the results were?
Yeah, so email everyone, there's fourteen people on the committee. We had, we see five people voted yes to change it to the original, three said that it cared, and two said no. We emerged with eight, so four didn't respond. So it was five, two pretty much, and three, but we keep, so it's five, four changing.
So in front of you or in your packet tonight are two separate calendars. One is the one that we already adopted. The other one is the one with revised spring break, which moves spring break from the twenty-third of March through the twenty-seventh to the thirtieth of March, which through April third, but then we had already adopted a calendar that had April sixth off because April fifth is Easter Sunday, and we were looking at that as a travel day for families. And so if we were to make that change, our spring break would actually be a week and a day, and that's not really an issue. The reasons Helena gave for putting their spring break where theirs was, was they felt it balanced third and fourth quarter better. That's a little bit of six, one, half dozen of failure. And I can tell you that the superintendent has absolutely no dog in this fight. I don't care what spring break is. It really doesn't matter. It's more about what we think is best for our kids and our families if we should make this change in alignment of the calendar. And if we don't want to make the change, we don't have to do anything. We can keep on keeping on with our lives here. If we do want to make the change, it would take board action.
So you brought up a lot of pieces on why to change it.
Yeah.
So I'm going to counteract all of that. One of the calendar committee parent, or teachers brought up a point that I hadn't thought about, and she said that with us having a week different, she's finding that teachers are actually, their spouses are having an easier time getting time off work because they're not competing with the whole school district at the workplace, trying to get that time off. I personally reached out to some different places in town about having a longer schedule and the concern that their kiddos not having places to go. This year, I don't know why I'm on this back. This year-
Not a hot issue, but it feels like it's a hot issue.
Um, this year, the sleeping giant and playing giant has changed their hours to match some of our hours for spring break. So I created a wire that will send out to all the individuals to share with them, to our kiddos. And then they said that they'll do the same next year. Exploration Works is also interested in next year. They can't do it this year since it's too late, but next year, they said that they would be interested in those kind of camps during our spring break if we were to stay at a older point. The one thing she did say is that she would be interested in a survey to see if our families were open to doing, to using that resource because they would have to have a minimum.
That's true.
The different camps, like basketball camps or something, I didn't really find any information on any of those, but I think just reaching out and letting people know that if we do keep it this state or way, that this is what's going on, like opening up teams now.
Apparently, they're valid, and so their studio was doing a camp. But I don't know what the pair was, but I don't know what the studio was doing.
Another big thing that I wanted to just remind everybody was, one of the reasons that the committee kind of stayed with this was the ACT testing for juniors. It was just mentioned that it's come off as spring break, and then you go right into your ACT assessment testing, so it's a part. So even though like we're looking at teachers and families, I think they also go with our students, so it's just for our district.
Okay, before the board, tonight, we have a decision to make. Essentially, it's one of two choices. Either we maintain the decision that the board made last month, or we move to reconsider and choose the calendar associated with the Helena schools. And I'm kind of in the same vein as Dan, is that I don't really have a preference one way or the other. I defer a lot on those individuals on the board that have children within the school district because I think that you are probably more representative of that than me. My kids are growing up. But pending the consideration, one thing that I would say is that I don't want to necessarily go through this again. If we are, if we're not willing to establish our own calendar and to make face on the decision of the committee and of the people that have taken the time to vet that out, then perhaps we should ask if the Helena School District would be willing, because they're not going to be obligated to, but be willing to allow us to have our hesitation on their calendar committee and just follow their calendar anyway. I do have to stress myself, my feelings towards that, but that's not my decision to make either. That's a good decision. So at this point in time, I would entertain a motion. I guess the way to look at it is that I would entertain a motion to reconsider a decision on our calendar and adopt the Helena School District's calendar being aligned to Helena School's calendar. Otherwise, if I don't get such a motion, then I die as a result of an motion, and we will just maintain the status quo. So at this point in time, do I have a motion to make?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second? But I ask again, do you have a second for the motion to reconsider our calendar? Saying that, the motion dies without a motion. Or lack of a second, it seems we have three. Jill? Okay. We now move on to new business, and the first item under new business is personnel action aid. I brought it to you by one of our board members. Except with the species thing. How can you do that? Or personnel action, to one of our board members. I wasn't thinking of that. Yeah. Just as a heads up, that's the reason why we're happy to do this, is that the person that we are considering is related to one of the board members. State law requires us to have an unanimous decision from all board members there, so in one of our board-
Hey, I'm going to look at speaker.
Is missing, so just reach out.
Okay. Okay, we've got Martin N on speaker. So the individual in question is Tristan's son, Garrett, who is a licensed CDL driver, and he has already been driving for us. This was, this kind of slipped through in January. We didn't have time to get the nepotism notice that we're required to by law before the January board meeting, and I didn't want to make Garrett wait a whole month or make the board come back to meetings, so to be allowed to continue, I talked to Robert Scott. And so that's what's been going on. He's been helping, he's really been failing us out, so we just want to make it official, get Garrett hired, so that can continue.
And I would say that this is a requirement due to nepotism laws by the state of Montana. We have to have all members of the board unanimously approve it with the board member who's related to the individual abstaining. So at this point, Tristan will abstain from consideration implied. I would entertain a motion to hire Garrett Homer as our East Helena Public School let strike.
Someone?
Motion from Marshap and second part, Tyrell. Questions, your comments from the board? Questions, your comments from the public? Say, I'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. No, no votes, so it was unanimous, Jill, and if you thought that was- There was no no votes, and so therefore it was unanimous to say by the board, Tristan abstained. Okay.
All right, do more. All right, have a safe trip.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is our request for check writing for.
Okay, in your supporting documents, back when we talked about the budget update, was the second sheet that looked like this from the O P I. This letter is an example of some things that are taking place in districts around the state based on legislation from the 2023 legislative session called the Educational Savings Account. What ESA does is it creates an avenue for parents of special needs children who qualify for special services under the Individual with Disability and Education Act to withdraw their child from the local public school that they've been enrolled in. And when they do that, they have the opportunity to apply for an ESA through O P I. And if it's approved, then the district that the child would be attending has to pay back the A and B that they received for that student to the O P I. And the O P I puts it into a special account for that family to use for education-related expenses such as private school tuition, therapies, online homeschool expenses, and other things like that. This program does have a pretty strict list of what can and cannot be used, so you can't buy a Humvee bike for your kid and get ESA reimbursement for it, or the season passes and it's lethal. But it has a very clearly articulated list from O P I as to what families can do with it. The hard part for districts is we get the A and B as part of our general fund budget for this year. We don't have a line item necessarily built in the budget to just pay this money back to O P I for this family. And then the, I guess, the general thinking would be, well, you're not serving that child anymore, so you don't need the money. But if you take one child out of school, it's not like you can lay off a parent professional or a teacher to compensate for that right in the middle of that actual school year. So in school districts where they're getting several of these, it's creating significant hardship. The amount that you see in front of you, thirty-six nineteen, is what we owe back to the O P I for this particular child and his family is actually half of the year of A and B, so they applied late and got approved for the second half. So that gives you an idea of what has to be paid. So the reason that this is an agenda item now is this amount has to be paid back to O P I every month on this campus. And we generally wait to disperse checks until the board has approved them. But for the ESA, in order for us to meet our obligation to O P I, we're asking the board for basically pre-approval or check writing authority to submit this check every month so that it can be sent in on a timely fashion to begin the obstacle construction and we can comply with the law.
I think so.
It's pretty complicated.
Yes, it is. So we would need that meaning a motion to approve business office to, on suing-
You have to be business office, business office to make the payments under ESA.
Okay, so I would entertain such a motion.
I'll make a motion to give business office permission to write to the O P I with the same.
We have a motion, we have a second. Second, you mark.
Who was the first?
Tristan. Make a motion, and a second if I mark. Any questions or comments from the board? Out of curiosity, Dan, I have a question on this, maybe this is more to Jill, but we've got that payment amount, seven twenty-three a month that we're providing, does the individual need to, do you know if they have to provide receipts to O P I for that?
So the money goes back, it stays in like a little account that they have there. They have to submit for reimbursement out of this cap. And the reason why we can't prepay any of it is if they were to basically re-enroll or attend to this, then we don't know if this money is going to be enough.
Okay, so then what happens to those funds if they don't exhaust?
They have four years to use it.
They have four years. During those four years, they have to remain outside- During those four years, they have to remain outside of the school district.
Correct. If they're enrolled with us, then they're being asked to part of this.
But would they re-enroll on that?
This episode.
That answer, where do those unused funds go?
They do not come back to us. They stay in their little account and they have four years to turn in reimbursement here sometime. Is what we're.
Okay, maybe I'm miss, maybe I'm not clear on my question. Is that a child A leaves the district and then decides to come back to the district but has not exhausted the amount of funds that have been deposited in their account up to that time. You said they have that for years, but they can no longer be part of that group. Does that mean that it just sits there and waits for the potential that they might re-join?
So these are a lot of the questions we have as well. And these are a lot of, and a lot of this is very confusing. So what we were told is that they have four years to reimburse. So we don't know if it hasn't been during that time when they bought the curriculum or they did whatever that was reimbursable, like an FSA, basically. We don't know that. No one knows that. But what we were told is that by law, we're required to give this money. And I had asked, can we prepay? Can we set it up to where it comes out nicely? And she said, no, you have to wait for an invoice because if they were to stop, we would no longer have to pay. And that was all we were basically told. And so it is a little confusing and I can tell you that the clerks across the board are very confused with this.
And then now they also continue in the program. So we, the child's not enrolled with us, but we still have to put a marker on their name in the campus. So next year, we'll get the A and B for the student. We'll actually budget it and just go by the.
Yeah. Give it right back.
Yes. But the first year that it happens is when you're like, oh, we didn't know this was coming. You have to write the check.
So they get enrolled in infinite campus, but they get enrolled as like a homeschool. And then there's a certain designation that for them that OPI has assigned and that's how they know. And then apparently if they decide not to do this anymore and they decide to enroll with us, then they let us know. How we know if they saw the invoice that I get and then they're no longer part of the whole thing. And there's, yeah, a lot of stuff, there's a lot of, it's sort of just up in the air.
And they're later like, you know, it's been four years. Like what happens? We're going to start this one by question.
Right after the, that's right. Or in the question was, well, what if they're a junior in high school and they graduate in a year? Do they still get three more years to use the money? And she couldn't answer the question while we're on the phone. Wow. Because technically they have to be school A, right? In order to qualify and they, she couldn't, she didn't know the answers.
I guess I'd assume that it's probably have to be in that.
That's what I'm guessing, yeah. I don't know.
Yeah, four years to turn it in.
It feels like they're kind of building a plan as they're flying.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the board? No, any other questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Well, I wish you the best of luck.
Yeah, this has been quite a year, a lot of new things.
Okay, seeing no questions or comments, I have called a question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, with a signal, motion carries. Okay, you've waited her out for a while. It's your turn.
Is that your calendar within key tonight?
Yeah, so this important report has become kind of a tradition at this time of the year. It also satisfies an annual requirement for the board to receive some education about Indian education for all. And our Indian impact teacher, Kim Metzger, is here to chat with you a little bit about the students that she's working with, the things that they're working on, and anything else that you want to share with us.
All right. First, again, I always start, despite saying thank you so much for this opportunity, it's, I've, this has been my thirtieth year teaching and it really is probably the most rewarding and relevant job that I've, that I've had. Our goals stay the same for the most part, closing that achievement gap between the native and non-native kids, building relationships with the kids and their families, being an advocate for them in the school district and out in the community. And then we track attendance and do a lot of grade checks. It's been very rewarding helping those seniors look for scholarships. These last few years, we've had several of our native kids go on to college and that's a first, a lot of the time in their families. We continue to go to take the Radley kids to the powwow in September at the last chance at the fairgrounds. This year, we had the May Pie dancers, drum group, singers come in and they were able to do simply this year for all five schools. We did a couple of them at Radley, but we did, the school, the high school separately this year, so they got to come and do performances for all the grades this year. I continue to do lunches every time with my Grand Petri kids, lessons with the classroom just to finish up with the fourth grade equals, we found those seven essential understandings. We did four, seven, first, four with fourth grade, and then we're five through seven with a dip. Continue collaborating with teachers. Some of the few things we've done last May, we were invited to our seniors, were invited to a graduation celebration for the Native American kids with the Helena Public Schools. We had Capital, Helena High, US, PAL, and then CTI, the Career Training Institute. We only had one of the kids. That was the first time we got invited to that. And that was pretty amazing how our kids get to stand up and share their experiences and be celebrated for such an accomplishment. OPI has a new tracking and accountability for us this year. We had Mike Jenny come and do early out at the middle school and high school in January. He'll be back in February to do the K five. But he reported to us this year that OPI has a new tracking and recording method. Every district this year is going to get great dependent on, dependent on a rubric that OPI created and that rubric really kind of got a glance at it. But it is, are we having lessons and activities monthly? Are we integrating EVA into existing curriculum? And they'll go through our end of the year data and judge it against that rubric and then we will receive that A. I mean, that's human. Yeah, I don't know. I'm very confident. Our teachers are, it's ongoing process, but our teachers are working diligently on those schools. We have a preorganized data recording system in all five of our schools. K five has, they have a tiger hump and that tiger hump is a folder with a heap of confidence where they can record their data. And K five is structured more toward a pacing chart. So what we did last year was building on, it's been pretty successful now, we're back and save that. The middle school, same thing, and the high school, a little bit different, a little bit more challenging because you don't have one teacher in charge of all the subjects. So it's kind of split up between grade levels and then between subject levels and then there's teachers that teach a couple of different levels. So they have just more forms that they kind of need to track with. And then the high school gives us their information through a Google form and it just goes by submission date. And when our time gets closer, I'll work the band, what we're organizing and all that information into a document that OPI can easily read and tell what our tradition is. Maybe it's how we've been integrating those lessons and activities. I just want to shout out that everybody who helps me, the admin, the teachers, our SROs, the secretaries, just the support staff, they are all on board. And a huge shout out to Lindsay for tackling that EVA, that easy grant that we have to do every year. It's kind of a nightmare and she's, she's got it down pat. She's a rock star. She kind of takes that over and.
Now they call it the easy grant.
I know. We refuse to call it that. Yeah, it is, it is not. It is several times a year, they require information from us that we have to dig out from places we didn't even know we had. So, but yeah, it's been good. New this year is visit with Mike Jenny, a bit in the dam also, the Indian Ed Conference is going to be held, I think it's seventh, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, just, yeah, worked out the details.
Conference is going to be held at high school this year, here. So we'll have educators from across the state coming to see our school and work through some new strategies and personal information. It's during our spring break this year, which makes it a little trickier for these town hall teachers to, we're excited to go to that. But I think it'll be great to have those teachers come into our school district and see the things they're going on in town hall too. But I'm very confident that we will fulfill all of our obligations to OPI and fulfill our obligations toward families, our Native American families, to get that information out there and spread among all of our population.
Questions for our Indian education for all board member? You would be disappointed if I did ask you.
I know. I told George that I might have got some stuff for him.
Yeah.
He got for me.
Got a couple. One is the OPI requirements grading phase of that measure. When did you get that? Was it, was it a time for you to change your program in order to meet those requirements? I, this is more of a question for OPI, but you're one that's exposed to these.
Gotcha. We just heard about it at the early out training, then January twenty-seventh, that was the first that, that I really had with that they were doing. And I think they just completed it, just completed the final, like we said, they have made some big personnel changes and OPI along with that came some upgrading and some new information. So I just heard about it on January twenty-seventh. I'll talk more about that with Mike Jenny when he comes in February, but he briefly showed us the rubric up on the smart board. And I don't think that we truly need to change what we're doing. I think we're on, on the right track because I followed along with submissions from, from all five schools. I think we are, we are on the right track. It's, they suggest one a month for each grade level, during grade lesson, make something new, make some batch of what already exists. I, I don't know that we have to change anything, but I'll, I'll visit with Mike in February and make sure that we are absolutely on track.
But I guess the frustration associated with that question was that I was afraid that OPI would say, yeah, here's the criteria. And oh, by the way, that valuation started back in September, it's full started.
Which is fine. We, we have our tracking from last year, we've built on that, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to see us getting penalized because we're doing the right thing, they're just way, or too slow to, yes.
That'll be a question I have for, for Mike, then when does this start?
Okay.
Yeah, he, he has actually sort of reviewed our data. We've talked about it and he has no objections so far, so.
And my second question is just, I think I've asked similar or this similarly in previous years, but for the non-Indian kids that are being exposed, because it is Indian education for all. And so it's for the entire, you know, what kind of responses have you gotten when you expose them to these types of cultural items or things, you know? What kind of?
Mostly it's a, the comment, we had no idea. We didn't know. I, I prefaced my, I just got done with my fourth grade lesson. So I preface it with telling those kids, my job is twofold. One is to work with the Native American kids and their families, make sure they have everything they need to be the best students they can possibly be. And two is to make sure that non-native kids are exposed and have the information they need to not be judgmental, to be culturally respectful to things because sometimes we judge or we're negative on things that we just don't know, that we just haven't been exposed to. I, they, they love the lesson. They really do say, we had no idea. You know, we just talked about the reservations not being given to the end if they were, if they're just like, you know, we didn't know that. So I, I think it's just so relevant information, so I hope for, for people, especially in our demographics to, to know these things. Yeah, I have good response.
Okay, because that's one of the questions that come up during legislative session each time, is that what kind of, what are you doing in order to ensure that native languages do not go extinct? And it's, they almost say, it's almost like we're going to force the district to escape in order to teach these languages so that it doesn't go extinct. That language needs care of a certain element of the population or there's others that perhaps are not going to be interested in the language.
Right. And that is a big push right now, right on the reservation, on schools that are on reservation because they are doing full immersion in offering those language classes. And just last year, we had our first student. So I shouldn't, I shouldn't even say we because I totally was awful at it. She chose ethnic and studied to study the Lakota language. And we went through for an entire year Lakota lessons and listened on, they were CDs and worked through a book. And, and so I think that opportunity to do that is, is out there if they choose to do it online. I don't think that it would be feasible to have an instructor for, you know, things. Our kids are all different tribes to have a personal instructor to do that, but it's available online now. It's, you know, we can visually do it on regimen where you can see them saying the words because you're like, like, well, when you're teaching kids how to, how to read and talk, they look at your facial expressions and how you, you know, form those letters. That's hard, but she did a great job. That could be an offer that we push, you know, for the native kids or anyone, any, any group, or it's one of the track ones.
Any other questions or comments for our Indian education committee?
Kim, I know that, you know, sometimes you have drumming in the schools. Are there any other arts kind of, I guess, get get or things that you bring into the schools as well other than the drumming or?
No, that's been the only real community activity that we brought in. We, I did visit with the teacher about, there is an opportunity to bring a TP building activity into our district. It would have to be passed through, I would guess the school board or Dan or insurance has to cover them leaving it on our property for, you know, an extended amount of time because you wouldn't correct a TP and then take it right down. We wanted so, so classes and, and kids could get in it. So there is, there is that to look into and I haven't yet, we're just kind of waiting till spring, but there, there's that tear up. But no, a lot of things we do are, are virtual, you know, on the computer or just.
I just was curious.
Yeah.
I know my son enjoys the drumming.
Yeah. Yeah. I was super happy it worked out for all five schools to get it this year. Yeah. And then we had one of our little cricket pair guys join in the dancing this year and he, he was awesome and he was, yeah, pretty, pretty proud of that, so.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, appreciate the report. Very good. Okay, and now move on to report on our two-two-seven academy.
Okay. Scotty asked for this actually back in December and we finally managed to get it on the agenda. Asked Paul to kind of take the lead on it tonight and he's submitted some documentation, partners' principals report, and Lindsay's going to kind of fill in the blanks on the middle school. And I'm just going to let you guys take it away. But before I do that, I, I do want you to know that, you know, our enrollment's holding pretty steady. But as we talked about earlier, we struggled a little bit getting our numbers allocated right in the middle school. But I think you're going to hear some things that are, some of the struggles that we've had tonight, you're going to hear some of that, but you're also going to hear some pretty amazing success stories that at least when I hear it, it makes me feel like this is worth the struggle to get this in place for our kid. The other thing is we do have to do accreditation reporting this year for our two, two-two-seven academies. And that is, again, a. And, um, that is, again, in addition to our second year accreditation event for the whole district, um, so we're chipping away at that as well this month. And, um, hopefully we can get it all in the bag in time for the report, for the guest and the OPII, because we've also got, uh, two-two-seven has also come along with some nice additional financial reporting, right, Joe? That, uh, was unexpected, so. But I'm going to turn it over to Paul. He had a written report that was in your packet, and just let him chat with you a little bit about what you want to, um, yeah, we're just, we're just kind of, I guess, I want
to make points and be ready, sort of throw some questions in. Um, so as of the time that I wrote this, we had sixty in the academy, and I think it's probably pretty close to that. We've had kids coming in now, the last week or two, um, realigning, either going into the academy or moving back to the high school for different reasons. Um. All right, in total, I think, um, roundabout, I'm sort of, and once again, this is a very fluid thing, you have to understand that, you know, the two methods of, of teaching that have been used here is competency-based learning and transformational learning. Transformational learning is kind of more like project-based stuff, um, and, and then when you're talking about competency-based learning, that's just basically, um, being competent at something and, and being able to pass that standard. So it has a, it has a different kind of way of grading. It's not like a, um, it's not like, there is number grades in there as well, okay? But, but it's a little, it's a little bit, um, it's a little bit different if, you know, if you have competency-based grading. It's about being competent at something as opposed to just having a grade at something. Um, so the teachers that are down there, we have four teachers, uh, that, that teach the four subjects down there, and they're all, they've all been through training a couple of times, uh, they, they, um, I'm not sure how many of those boys worked in last year. Lindsay? How many of those boys?
None.
None? Okay. So, and so what we did, um, with the guys, because they, they had trained in it, um, last year, they just moved down there. So we had different teachers down there last year. One of the things we did before we got down there, we do have a youngish teacher down there, but the other three are very, very experienced, as well, probably three of our junior teachers in high school, yeah. Um, last year, I'm not quite sure what happened, there wasn't too many credits going on, but I think a lot of that has to do just with the structure. It was kind of one of the things that we had Trish talking about, and both the councils in terms of how it was going to be structured in the day. Um, through the first semester, you know, we've got a hundred and eight credits, um, that the kids have got semester credits from the academy side. Um, we've got sixty-one semester credits from NTDA, because that's another component of this thing. Um, and then we've got seven credits from Ichinori, um, which is another online provider we have. Um, overall, um, I think we, it's, it's been pretty successful, but in saying that, we've, we've had some, um, you know, there are some areas there that we're looking at now and saying, okay, we need to fix this and change this. Um, I'll tell you one, uh, we're a bit too flexible. Um, so we have these kids, um, sort of chomping and changing, as opposed to saying, okay, we told you what it's going to be like, um, you're just going to have to lie in your bed now. Uh, but we have made, um, adopted a couple of changes for, for different kids to accommodate them, and I think that's probably come back to bite us a little bit in terms of the amount of time we have to, having to spend, as opposed to them just sort of getting into the year to start off with. We, we made this first agreement, the first agreement is this, you guys have broken it, we're going to make another agreement. So it's, um, yeah, so, so a lot of things like that, that we, we're going to try and, um, hire now, um, especially in terms of, you know, when they can change over. Um, initially, my thought was, you know, as soon as they're not doing what we're asking them to do, two-two-seven will break, put them back into the high school side, and then just deal with it that way. Because we don't want it to be treated like a dumping ground, we want it to be sort of, you're in the environment, okay? It's a different kind of environment to work in. And one of the things that I, I mentioned, uh, to anybody who listens to me, is that it's very quiet down there. That's one of the things, this is very quiet. We don't want any sort of craziness down there. And the other thing is that the kids have to be working. Now, does that happen a little time? Um, no, because we've got some kids that come from some pretty tough situations. One of the things we try and do with them, for instance, they'll come in and they'll go to sleep, okay? Uh, when that happens, we take them out of the office. And one of the things you learn through sport is that, you know, that you, that you can't respirate long than an hour, um, if you're an athlete, because then it throws you just a K D rhythm set. So we set an hour, we say, okay, wake them up forty minutes, wake them up, take them back down to the classroom, and go again. So just, just little things like that to sort of keep them, keep them moving and going on. Um, and then, and then once again, you know, and, and those are the kids that struggle, and they're, they're struggling anyway, but we just kind of work our way through it, though. It's about being fair, but also we need to set some boundaries, and I think we need to just keep, we just seem like, because we haven't quite found, quite made sure, that we're working too hard, also. Um, but anyway, we're glad to give them a chance. And last little thing here before I throw some questions at you. This is just some, um, I got, I got some kids to have chat with this afternoon, and, um, and so this first kid here came into the school year this year, she's a junior with, uh, two-point-two-five credits, but just to keep that in perspective, she should have sixteen at this stage, um, or fourteen, fourteen, sixteen. Um, this semester, she's gotten seven, and that's, um, that's seven credits in total. So she's, she's passed, what's it, several classes, or something?
Seven classes.
Yeah, several classes. Um, and this is what she said. And, and the question was, you know, why is the two-two-seven program important? That's kind of what I said to her. And she said, it helps a lot of students that are trying to get on pace. I was really behind and out ahead in doing senior classes and a couple of college classes. There are a lot of opportunities the regular classes don't have. You can work your own pace, so if you're behind, work a lot faster to get ahead, instead of being in a regular class and going in the same place as your parents. Uh, another student here, she's a junior as well, coming into the year, she had seven-point-two-five credits. Um, this, and so far this semester, she's gotten four, four out of four. Uh, and what she says is a bit long-winded, but more muted. Um, it gives different kids chances to get caught up in credit deficiencies, it gives kids a chance to get back on track for graduation, it gives them more motivation to be on that path and go somewhere with life. And when you give them that chance to do that, they become more successful. When you take away that chance, you take away that chance, they have to succeed and go somewhere with life, where they really want to go. It gives kids a chance to prove, yes, I can do this. Even though many people think that they are not able to, um, it puts them in a better mindset, and the more they can be on that path, the more they will help job-wise, social-wise, how to be independent, uh, kind of things, kind of keep things in order on your own terms, uh, get more organization skills. Uh, you're open to work independently, because teachers more want to own the time than some kids need. Um, and then we've got another kid here, um, and this one here has already had seven-point-five credits coming into the year, she's a sophomore, and, um, and she's down there and says, uh, for somebody who wants to graduate early, it allows me to do my classes faster. The earliest I could graduate, the semester early, so this allows me to do my work faster. On days I'm not feeling good, I can do less and do extra work later to catch up. Um, yeah, she's got around about four credits coming in, but she also does a lot of online classes, which are kind of half finished, she's got about two or three. Um, yeah, so anyway, so this is kind of, you know, and it's just a really, I mean, we're, we're all kind of leaning this to go along in terms of, um, how to solve things and doing them. But once again, going back to the, going back to the original, original part, we think it's working. Uh, and, and the reason being, uh, because last year, there was very few credits to come in again, this year we got a lot. Um, and also it allows, uh, some of those kids, those seniors that want to work, gives them the opportunity to sort of do their classes, um, online, and then, um, they can go and work, um, which is what some of them wanted to do. So it gives a lot of flexibility. Um, anyway, I'll throw some questions, ask some questions now, but.
Do you remember how many questions were?
Yes, yes. They, they couldn't do paper reads, but, so.
Did you want to add anything?
I, the middle school. The middle school is just a little different. Um, next year, I'd like to change it, because my teacher's teaching sixteen, um, classes just in the core, because he's teaching six, seven, and eight for English, math, social studies, and science. So he has a lot of blood on his plate in front of us, or is tapping out on me next year? So I'd like it to be more of a rotation through there, so that it's not one person teaching sixteen. Um, right now, we have twenty-nine, ten of those are the sixth graders, that's going to be killing our numbers, but, uh, we are getting two, two are moving one for twelve right now, so we'll have thirty-one in ours in E B M S, so that's a lot of kids per, per program. And honestly, like, now that everyone's seen what it's about, we have a lot of interest, but sometimes, um, those interests will come together as a meeting with the parents and our counselors, and determine if that's what's best for that kid, and sometimes we determine it's not, just because of this setting, so.
So in general, academies are having positive influence on students, this is the report I'm getting. And if we're having, the kids are struggling, whatever, trying to address those, either move them out of that situation to maintain the integrity of the academy, or address them in some other ways, is what I'm hearing, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. Um, we're adjusting the best we can, but as I said, I think one of the problems we've got is we're adjusting too much, um, you know, they're getting like a third or fourth life. I think somebody on the track, um, you know, we've got to probably cut it off, especially when we're talking about A and B, and we, you know, moving those kids back to support us, so. Yeah, but, you know, in, in hindsight, we probably shouldn't have moved the kids around so much, but our initial thought is like, let's do it as best we can, okay? So, yeah, still, still a little problem.
I think one other thing that you guys did bring up, and it's really hard when you're looking at data and numbers in education, because we always like to make assumptions about what we're seeing in the data, but you can't ever actually go back and undo whatever you did to see if you'd have a different result. But, but all the middle school and the high school, we've seen a difference, and we actually discussed it during the principal class tonight, in, not, in a little bit in the number of referrals and behavioral fractions we're seeing, but also in the severity. Um, and I think you could, uh, make a reasonable connection there. At least some of the students that are benefiting from being in two-two-seven, getting some additional adult attention, feeling like maybe they're being successful at school rather than failing at school, or choosing to do better rather than act out and cause problems. And, I mean, I can't say that that's true for every child, I definitely would never put out there that every kid in the two-two-seven is to create your problems, because we wouldn't do that to our teachers down there. Um, but you do have a lot of kids who maybe for one reason or another are struggling to be successful in a traditional school environment, and this gives them a different avenue to be engaged and, and feel successful. And, I, you know, it, first of all, common sense, it stands to reason. We've also been taught that a lot as part of our professional training as educators, that the more we can keep kids engaged on something positive and move forward in their lives, the less likely they are to act out, cause trouble, disrupt, and, and be a problem. So there's a, there's a spin-off side effect to that, that it's not necessarily a cause and effect, but it's, it's reasonable to assume that it is having a positive impact in the climate in these schools overall.
Dan, can I answer? We have, uh, a lot of kids begging to give it to two-two-seven right now, and I don't think that was the case prior years. I mean, I hand out at least two or three two-two-seven applications a week for students that see their success that's going on down in two-two-seven and want to be a part of it. So I, we've talked about putting some look-ins, when you can go and back and forth between the two, but we're seeing a lot of kids are like, I know two-two-seven works for myself, but I mean, here's why, and they can fill out an application for it, or to that point versus we're trying to get as many kids as we can, which is a hard place to be in.
Trish, do they see that as a, do they perceive it as an easier pathway? Or do they legitimately believe that it is something that fits their specific needs?
Uh, I'm going to say what they put on their application is that it is something that they can work at their own pace, it's not that perceived that it's easier, it's just that they can work at their own pace and get through the classes if they need to, as many of them like to. We have a couple of them graduate early, so that's the path that we have for them. Uh, do I think a couple think that it's a little bit easier? Yes, but we also have pretty big conversations with them and have them go look at that before we even entertain them entering two-two-seven. So they can go visit the classroom, they can see what's going on, they can look at what's in the classrooms themselves as far as the work that needs to be completed. Uh, and a lot of them, some of them will backtrack, be like, nah, maybe I don't want to do that. Pretty open, honest conversation with the kids.
I hate to be suspicious, but whenever I hear the kids are saying, yeah, start knocking on doors, I want to make sure that it's for various reasons.
It is, and if we feel out that that's kind of the direction they're heading, we have some pretty serious conversations with them and parents. Uh, we deny five kids a semester that this is out of the group, and have conversation with parent, parent, or student, so.
And we moved some kids back, uh, from two-two-seven back into the high school for varying reasons. Um, and one of them was basically a broken contract, which was the body fat, you know, putting in effort, all they put in effort in the back of the high school now, um, probably not, but, um, that's, that's kind of up to him. You know, once he was treated like, you know, it's, it's something to aspire to, to be in here, it's not sort of a dumping ground.
Any other questions for our two-two-seven academy? Thank you all, appreciate the information on it. And I think we can probably go on to our next item. Thank you. Uh, which, our next item is consideration of a traffic study proposal.
Yeah, so Clint Smith, parent of the district, owned it for a long time, uh, had some idea of us possibly considering the traffic study at Pear Elementary. Um, that kind of spun into a couple of other conversations, um, that we're going to talk about tonight, one of which, uh, was actually started at last month's board meeting, a conversation about that unsafe crosswalk at Main Street in Kalispell. And that led me to the realization that we might have an outside chance to submit a, for a, a new round of T A grants, uh, locally here. And so that kind of became part of the conversation, and so now we have a whole bunch of different things to look at tonight. And, um, Clint, I'm going to let you introduce your folks, and then you guys can take it away.
Thank you, um, for this opportunity to be in front of you and present these. Like Dan said, grew up East Helena, been around East Helena and Helena for my life, so I traveled these roads, had two daughters that went through the school system here and saw the different struggles, uh, each day, had to go through, through these over to the Staley Engineering Office. Um, Kaia has joined our team with, uh, a lot of experience coming from Wyoming, and with her, her expertise in the transportation side, we just want to be able to bring this forward terribly. Biggest point is to be able to look into the future, not five years, not ten years, but look in twenty years down the road. We helped with Valley Drive reconstruction on, on the north half of it with the county already, worked with the grants to be able to facilitate the T A, um, on the, for the entire portion of it, as well as working with the RACE grant, and to be able to partner with the school, with the developers, with the town of East Helena, the county, as well as work with M D T, as you'll see on the Kalispell crosswalk area on jurisdiction. So being able to collaborate with all parties, come together, do the best that will save the kids in traffic and trouble. Uh, with that, I'll, 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 Kaia, go through.
I'm Kaia Lark. I am out of our Cody office in Wyoming. Um, I worked for YDOT for thirty years, and now this is my retirement job, so, um, I really am very interested in traffic, and so this was kind of an interesting thing. Um, I guess some of the background, why we came forward, is we did the RACE grant, did the traffic study, and you guys were, uh, Prickly Pear was open at that time in twenty-nineteen, they were just building the high school. So you, you know, had quite a few improvements, and more traffic, um, pulling the traffic studies, there's five hundred more cars that travel down Valley Drive than when we did the traffic study in twenty-nineteen. So this impacts the school. The more traffic there is, the harder it is for you to get in and out. And so we, I kind of looked at the Prickly Pear, the first part of the proposal, we kind of separated it out into three different options, so there, it's not just, it's more of a long-term proposal for the different traffic issues. We start with the focus on Prickly Pear, because that, to me, is, because Valley Drive is getting reconstructed, it's kind of the, kind of your base point of all your traffic at this point. It's kind of the, kind of your base point of all your traffic at this point. So I kind of, you know, that you had your different first grade, second grade, the bus lane. We kind of like, I guess we're proposing that we study all of your circulation patterns, how much traffic's coming in and out, where they're coming in and out of it. You have two, one exit onto Valley Drive from this school. I think you can come out that one. That's all in, so there's one entrance on the north, one entrance on the south. You could exit and enter this side, exit down here. So you're kind of like forcing traffic right now to certain locations. And it's like studying this to see whether or not this is working. Along with the improvements that is gonna come with Valley Drive. Cause that's kind of like the first focus we'd like, you know, propose some more, uh, short-term, not literally short-term, but not as expensive items, like maybe signage, paint, just different things that would maybe direct the traffic through the school in a better way. And then maybe long-term, if there's some things that we see, maybe being able to recommend different grants or different things that can help the school with this, like to get these things done. The other thing that I talked to Dan about was there's kind of a mention that the city of Helena, or East Helena, had possibly wanted you to donate or sell, I don't know what the terms of that was, but to extend Thurman Drive up to, um, High Meadows, Highland Meadows subdivision. So that would kind of, it would include this, from what I understand, you know, right here, it would extend up right here. That causes its own problems in itself, it could be beneficial to the school, it could be detrimental to the school. It'd be like, you know, looking at this to see what actually is good for the district. Because you don't wanna be extending that lane if it's gonna affect traffic in a bad way. One thing that we, in my mind, a proposal would, you know, even doing like a roundabout right here where your traffic could come up, Thurman come around and come down. I, I'm not sure, cause I haven't studied it, where your second grade, when they drop off right here? If traffic backs up, I mean, you, you know, you've gotta have a point where traffic is backing up. Do people, you turn right there and get in the way? Do they keep going up?
Generally, that's not horrible, I bet up there.
It's not what?
It's not horrible there.
It's not horrible there?
They're at Lewis Street.
Right here.
Because it exacerbates, the left turns in, it backs up, you got a traffic jam, the twiddle will be a pile of bad stress.
Yep. So, yeah, that's kind of, uh, that's kind of the first part of the proposal, is just kind of specifically looking at Prickly Pear itself to see if there's anything that needs to be done. Along with consideration on Valley Drive. And then another proposal, if you would want, like us to look at the Thurman Avenue extension to see if, how that would fit in. I'll go to this next slide. So this is the proposal for the, um, Valley Drive reconstruction that we submitted with the RACE grant. They have not put out an RFP yet to pick the design firm to do the final design. They are still waiting for a signed grant agreement from the FHWA. So this is what we submitted, so this will be the basis of what they're gonna go with, with the RACE grant. But I wa, I can't guarantee that this is what's gonna be the exact design since it hasn't been selected. One of the things we are doing, which, um, answers your question with Lewis Street, we're gonna realign. Lewis Street, we've proposed into the Prickly Pear, so that it is more of a in-out, so you're not getting that little weave in and out of the, um, the school. It also is moving your crosswalk to match up with this new path that comes down Lewis Street that MDT put in. Another proposal that we're trying to get the two together is there's a TA grant that East Helena have got to put in a trail from King Street all the way up to Plant Road. So that would be incorporated into this, if we can get everything together with the funding at the same time. So that's what these lines are, is putting where the new trail is gonna go. So everything will come down through here and then put traffic like, right here, there's a crosswalk, so the trail can come here and kind of get the kids and the pedestrians and the bicycles. Not as much conflict with the traffic coming in and out. And then this eliminates being able to have, kids have to cross the street, Lewis Street, and then cross Valley Drive and then cross back, so we're trying to get those done. There's also some RRFBs, which are the flashing beacons, that will be going in with the TA grant. I think there's two of them with the different, two different crosswalks, so that that'll help what people are going across. Part of the proposal, I guess, on the Prickly Pear too, and it's in my thing, is actually seeing where are kids crossing? I mean, are they trying to cross Valley Drive? Where are your bicycles coming? Where are your pedestrians going? Are you, is there conflicts? Are kids running across the street between traffic? To know, you know, do we need to do something different? There's also gonna be curbing gutter and sidewalk all along this east edge of Valley Drive. So not only will there be this path, but there's also gonna be curbing gutter and sidewalk on the other side. And then it'll have a turn lane through this whole thing that will match up to the turn lane that's already been built to Plant Road. But then in the turn lane end right here at Lewis Street. One of the other things is we're gonna add, we've proposed to add a double turn coming out of the center approach, so you'll be able to turn right or left. It won't be incoming, but it'll go right or left. So this is just a proposal at this point. I mean, this is kind of what we've proposed. It's, you know, suggestions, I'm sure as the things go on. We'll be coming to the school board to, you know, find out if, how things are working. So the other part, this is all the, as you can see, is a lot of work. I mean, this is gonna change Valley Drive quite a bit. And so in the future, as we go to the, this is kind of an overview of all your schools with Radley being here, Prickly Pear. I think that it's kind of an incremental traffic study really to, for the school district, cause you don't want to be studying all the schools at once. Because as you make a change at Prickly Pear, it's gonna change stuff at Radley. As you do at Radley, it's gonna change the middle school. Just from some people who live, who've had, that I work with, that have had kids here, one of the things they say is King Street, right here, is like one of the points that's really hard, cause kids have to, parents come in and they come here and then trying to get onto Valley Drive, it's very difficult. But you don't know how traffic patterns are gonna work once all this, the Valley Drive has been done. You're gonna have a roundabout down at Main Street. There's different things that are gonna be done. You don't wanna study something right now that you know is gonna have a different outcome in, say, three years. So that's, my proposal is to do this kind of thing incrementally as you see the traffic changes.
One of the things to add to that, like Dan was saying earlier, is, you know, we've got a hundred and twenty graduating, a hundred and eighty coming in. So when there's that flux of children, that's just even more traffic that's going in and out. So traffic studies are, are good for that point in time, but that future in the planning, working as a team of what is the new student population that's coming in and out, to be able to plan for that with, you know, larger, larger things happening south of East Helena. It's a, it's a twenty, it's a thirty-year partnership that we wanna develop to be able to forecast the best we can to keep the safety of the kids.
I think one other thing to consider too, is as you're putting in for grants, the more studies you have, the most recent studies, it's easier to get a grant for any work when you have updated information. So knowing that you've actually looked at this and then you go into the grant process and you say, hey, this is what we've done already. Here, we're applying for this grant. They know that you've actually been looking at this and planning for this. So that is my presentation for, this is a traffic studies, this is the proposal. I know we kind of put this out there, kind of cool calling, but it had been on our radar as we were putting in for the RACE grant, knowing everything was this way. We had just wanted to check in with you to see if there was anything that we could help you with, see any problems that you might've had. See if we have questions.
When is, when is the, or the proposed date for?
For Valley?
Like Valley Drive, you know?
Well, they haven't gotten an RFP yet for design, and they're still a couple of years out from the time. I know they haven't talked to MDT at all about control on Main and, uh, State Highway that goes through to Montana and the State Highway. So we're talking around about, or Signal or something there, that's a, it's a jump through. You know, you don't get to put stuff like that on the state system without some kind of nerfs or access.
I think they have actually gone, they have gone. Yeah, I just wasn't sure, I just, what I had understood that they had talked to MDT about. But I, but it will take a while. I think the earliest that they think that anything possibly could start would be in twenty-six for reconstruction. But that's if things were to go just perfectly in the process. And as we all know, things never go perfectly in the process, so.
It's just difficult to do anything, knowing you're gonna tear it all up.
We-
In a few years.
Yeah. I don't think anything that we're proposing for the traffic study or any proposals that we would have would be on Valley Drive itself. So nothing, to me, just kind of looking at this, the, the things that, immediate solutions right now could be more signage, striping, things like that. I don't think that there's anything at this point that you would, um-
That would be construction.
That would be construction-related, because at that point, that would be, trying to figure out like a proposal, where would you, how much would you wanna spend? What would you wanna do? Here's your different options. You'd have to understand that, is it gonna be affected by Valley Drive? Are you seeing, you know, with only one entrance off of Valley Drive and one off Thurman, as you're starting to see, just knowing where your conflicts are, is there something different that you would wanna do within these? Or wait and, you know, see kind of how things go, or knowing that those might be alleviated by something like this, so.
There, so there's a couple of things that caught my attention when Clint called me about this. The first one is, traffic flows at Prickly Pear have been a sore spot with the community since the day the school opened. It was, it was poorly designed from the start. It's, it's been an issue and a source of frustration for parents, um, in that time. And we've made some changes over time that I think have really helped. Change in the entrance from a two-way to a one-way, I think, had a huge impact. But the, so the, the question is, could we make it better? And with the, and then there are, there are a couple complicating factors that, that contribute to this. One is the, we know that sooner or later, or we at least we hope, Valley Drive is gonna get built and improved. So looking at that design, are there changes that we could make either now or at the time of construction with Valley Drive that would improve traffic flow and accessibility on the Prickly Pear property? Those pictures that we were looking at, that you were just showing us with the double exits from those two exits on Academic Way and then the one at the south by the cemetery, that was a school district's suggestion in a design meeting probably three or four years ago over at Staley, and I was in that meeting. That's, and you were there, that's what we proposed. That doesn't mean that that's an engineered solution, it's just a school superintendent saying, hey, it might be a good idea if we did this. So, so that, those factors together caused me to do a second thought about that when Clint called me and, and discussed it with Scott, as, you know, maybe we ought to look at what's going on there and if we can make improvements and what those improvements like might be. And like you guys were saying, it might not be construction at all, it could be moving the bus pickup from where it's at to another point on the property and getting the buses away from the cars. It could, I mean, there's a lot of different things that we could look at and consider and study. But then the, the next piece of that puzzle that you'll see in here, and this is why this feels like we're throwing stuff at a wall, is the city, when they, when they did the final plaque for phase five of Highland Meadows, which is the subdivision to the north of us across the fence from Prickly Pear, they made the developers stub in Thurman Street up to the fence at, on his side of the property. So it's not built yet, but that's how it's gonna get built. So there'll be a dead end from Thurman at the Highland Meadows fence and then a dead end at Academic Way where we built it too, when we built Prickly Pear. The city is anticipating that their, that Thurman Street's gonna get extended across our property. But right now, and then what they're asking for right now is to stub in the water and sewer lines across that field to connect in Highland Meadows. That'll give them some redundancy for fire protection, as well as just the way the whole sewer network operates. But in order to even do that, actually requires us to go through the subdivision process with the city, cause we've gotta split our lot now and cede that property over to the city, so they have that easement for the utilities. Or at least that's what Kevin Orr is telling me. And so looking at Thurman Street and the possibility that it could be a street someday, and, and this is a really serious question, because that's, right now, it's our property and we have to look at that and say, are we gonna wanna build a school there or a playing field or a swimming pool or whatever someday, instead of a street? And, and would it benefit us at some point in the future to even have a street there? Or like Kai said, it could actually make things worse. So, and that's a question that I can't answer for you. And so that, that's how Thurman plays into this conversation, because if it gets built, or whether it should be built, is really part of the whole Prickly Pear traffic discussion. I think that, uh, from my perspective, looking at Radley is like biting off more than we really wanna chew right now.
Right.
I guess what, and I'm, I'm sure that other trustees have questions about this whole situation or proposal. What I need to understand from you guys, Kaia and Clint and company, is are these numbers additive? Like thirty-nine thousand is your proposal for a Prickly Pear traffic study, forty-seven thousand for the extension of Thurman, that's in addition to the thirty-nine thousand, or if we add Thurman in, if the price goes up, it's clearly more than seventy thousand? So that's one question I have. My other question is, so what are the deliverables that the district is gonna expect if we decide to move forward? if we decide to move forward with this? What's the timeline? And, and what are, what's the board gonna get for their money if they decide to move forward with this? Because I'm not, and I, maybe I didn't read thoroughly enough on the page, but maybe you can talk to us a little bit about that?
Um, I had it as, in addition, they're like separate studies, because Thurman, and I think it, it, they're, it's kind of optional, depending on what you want to. I mean, I kind of put out there thinking, okay, you're gonna have right-of-way issues, you know? Are you gonna want to do this? It's like really how in-depth the study that you want to have. So those numbers are, you know, negotiable in determining, hey, we don't really want to do this part of this study, so let's, you know, or can we add these two together? So I think that's kind of where we're looking at. The deliverables, I think it would be a report, it could be plans, just showing you what that is, the different, kind of like, you know, a study type thing. And just, you know, giving you your ADTs, giving you your traffic.
Where are you planning to take data collection at? And what kind of data collection, I guess, if you're talking, twenty-four hour counts, weekend counts, spring, summer, fall, you know, assess the weather, the seasonal variation of Montana. There's, there's, at least at MDT, we, we adjust traffic numbers based on our, our local, well, we've experienced. So whatever you get out of the IT, and whatever the journey was different. So that may be something, definitely, if you're looking for kids, you're not gonna want to be doing any jobs until springtime.
No.
Because right now, maybe you're not getting anything, very little. So that's kind of something, you know, depending on how you're doing, or when you're planning on your data collection. So that depends on how long your study goes.
Right, and I think that's something that is gonna have to be kind of determined by the board too, of like how in-depth you want to do it, when you want to do it. I think doing it in the spring is better, you're gonna get the bicycles, you're gonna get the traffic. Right now with the snow levels-
They're playing hard right now.
Yeah.
Everyone's coming in cars.
Everybody's coming in cars, you can't really, you know, like, I think like when you drop off your kids here, how many parents are actually wanting to drop their kids off at this point? Like, do you see them sneaking over to the first grade? I don't know what your rules are in the school, but knowing dropping off my granddaughters at school in the morning, it's like they want to be dropped off at the front door, because it's just, you know, it's below zero and they're cold, so, and they'll pay.
Are you thinking Myo Vision, or Talk2Tunes, or, I mean, you know, I mean, I'm just-
I, I, we are gonna like hire, get a subconsultant from WSP to, to help us with some of these traffic studies, just the counts and stuff. Some of the stuff that we'll do is like do an inventory, kind of what you have right now. Like being able to say, where does your traffic are? What kind of signs do you have? You know, where, what kind of traffic control do you have on campus right now? Being able to know how much traffic is coming on Thurman Street and exiting on Thurman Street, and how much is coming in up on the north entrance, and then coming out on Lewis Street. You want to know kind of the circulation patterns of how your traffic is actually moving. Are you having parents, you know, come in on this north entrance and then exit out Thurman to avoid coming into Lewis? So I think there's a lot of different access points that we're gonna have to do. I don't, can't tell you the specifics of exactly what will, what equipment that they're gonna use.
I guess what I'm digging into, I'm trying to figure out where the money, where the dollar figure came from. So, do you guys have a, like a breakdown, school fee services of all your hours and activities that you're looking at doing? Because I see a number here, and I'm trying to figure out like where's the bulk of the money coming? Because I know data collection can be pretty intensive, it can cost some money. Depending on where that data collection occurs, you may be able to target and then make it really efficient, because there are so many back alleys that come by Radley. I mean, I drive this every day or every other day, picking kids up, because my daughters are Prickly Pear, my sons are Radley. And then my oldest is up in High School, so making a left on Valley Drive sucks. When the RFP goes off, you can sometimes squirt it out that way, because it, the way it's with the diagonal, it'll halt traffic, and sometimes the bus will squirt there. But, I guess, trying to capture that coming into Prickly Pear, if you get Thurman and Lewis Street there, kind of the backside, everything funnels into that point, so a data collection point there would be really good.
Right.
Because it doesn't matter where they're coming from on the city network, because they come in from, by the park, they come in from Radley. If we're only looking at Prickly Pear, I mean, that's a great point to pick up. That's the end, you have the end coming from the other side, so, you know, I mean-
That's what we are proposing, is to just focus on Prickly Pear at this point. We don't want to go outside the campus.
Well, then all that data collection could be beneficial to the Thurman study. So I guess I'm trying to look at like, you know, where does that overlap? Because if you, you know, I, I guess I'm looking for, what's your breakdown of these different options? Because I'm just curious, I'm sorry, I-
No, that's okay, I-
I do this work for kind of a living, and so I'm-
When I was looking at it, it just depends on if they're separated out too. It's like if you decided to do the Prickly Pear campus right now, yeah, just focus on Prickly Pear right now, but you decide, oh, well, we want to wait on Thurman for, say, two years. So, you're gonna have to collect all new data for Thurman at that point. So, knowing what kind of scope that we want, with the different activities and the different optionals, I think that's something that, knowing where you're at, I just put this out as a proposal right now. I would like you to, like, look at it and consider it for this, so that we can actually come up with a good scope of work, so that we know exactly what you're expecting, what you want to have. I just wanted to give you some rough numbers of them individually as individual studies. And not really combined together, because you're right, at Prickly Pear, you can use a lot of that study data for Thurman. But if you separated it by years, would it really be as a group?
Well, and the point to that, based on years, when Valley Drive gets reconstructed with the toilet replaced, that is gonna change your traffic, consider them, it's gonna take six months before that settles down.
It would, and that's-
Now all your left turns have an avenue to sit, and the queue changes, the, the dynamics change. So in some respects, I almost wonder, is this the appropriate time to even look in at a study at now? Because the data collected now is gonna be basically kaput as soon as Valley Drive turns dirt. And if they pave and restripe it to three lanes, the left-hand turns coming out, it's, it's gonna change. So instead of having people, like I've done, I see them, they go through the parking lot, and then they come back down through Thurman, they get back onto, you know, through the city network and get on Main Street there, because the left turn is coming off of Montana, or, or- If you've got a higher form of traffic control there, then it's gonna attract traffic. And so in some respects, I'm not even sure if it's appropriate to do any kind of a study until after that traffic pattern shifts, because the recommendations made now could be completely opposite of what maybe happens then. So, and I, and I get it, it's kind of a chicken egg thing, you know? Like you want to, can we do anything in combination with the project? Well, one thing I'd be an advocate for is reconstructing the one approach, so that it is allowed to make left-hand turns, or to make it a two-way, you know, in the middle where the bus is a right turn, only that one curd line really hampers any kind of left style of there. Even though the buses do it right now, but since it's bus-only traffic coming out of Prickly Pear, they can sheet the, they can sheet the line and then make that corner, so it turns north. Because before, when it was built for Prickly Pear, High School wasn't there, there wasn't a need really to head north. So, but again, all of that dynamic changes as soon as you add that to the left turn lane, because that left turn doesn't block and queue the mainline traffic, because the through keeps going as long as that can flush. And I could come up with other, you know, issues where you've got level of service delays of those approaches. And not that I'm saying they would need a higher form of traffic, like a signalizing, but they won't be warrants, because it's not enough, but those dynamics will, I mean, it's just gonna take time to flush out. So I guess those are all the questions I have, and it's, is-
So, is it-
A quick pocket.
Is it safe to say that we want to see some more detail in this proposal? Because I have a, a couple of concerns. First of all, I, I don't feel like it's totally clear what's being proposed and what the board's gonna get. Second of all, like I was just talking with Scott, if we were to, if the board were to say right now, okay, we want to pull the trigger and do this Prickly Pear and this Thurman Drive study together, that would, in my mind, we'd be breaking state law by not putting it out to a competitive bid, because we'd be exceeding the eighty thousand dollar limit on that. So, the most that we could even accept right now would be just the Prickly Pear study in and of itself. And I feel like maybe, maybe I rushed you guys a little bit, getting this together, and maybe it needs a little more time for some fine tuning and revision before, and, because we're not really under a strict timeline with Prickly Pear. So is it okay if we table it? So maybe we can table, or, and, and then postpone any action on it? Right now, is that, is that okay?
I've been looking for kind of a consensus of the board, if that's something, if there's somebody that is, you know, totally on board, willing and able to make a motion, I would entertain that right now, otherwise I would entertain a motion table at a future date.
Maybe in fairness to Staley's group, is, is there, what we need to be able to get? Infrastructure, I don't think infrastructure would be directly what you may, maybe look a little bit more in depth to work on, still being tight meetings, so that they understand what we're looking for, we got. So, I mean, essentially, so we can kind of shape that a little bit, so you can come up with a better, more cost breakdown associated? Because, I mean, thirty-nine thousand dollars, we can get a lot, maybe a little, I mean, who knows? At this point, I, so, don't take that wrongly or anything.
No, I think that, I guess my opinion, it's better for us to put a scope of work together. This is just kind of a proposal for me, you know, with some input from Dan, but needing to have input from the school board and the school to be able to know exactly, to fine tune this proposal, to be able to come out with exactly what you want to have. So I think it would be great if we could get together, do some kind of scoping report for this, so that you guys are happy, and then you can maybe get a product that would be exactly what you're looking for.
If I could add, add to that, and, and that's what Kai was saying too, because we've got the school bus drivers behind this, as well as parents and everything, is to bring us to all together at the table at the same time, because it is gonna change from this spring to next spring when Phase Five of Highland Meadows starts, and then the fall and spring, the potential for Valley Drive to start construction there. So it's gonna be sequential, and that can be built into the planning and the phasing, as well as the pricing for that too. So we want to be able to take advantage and use each of those options for the best intent.
Yeah, I think that might be of the best interest of the client's scope to figure out type risks. I mean, I think it'd really be crucial for us to decide when we want the project on this thing.
That change will make a massive difference in the traffic pattern.
Absolutely, and I don't want to invest a lot of tax dollars into something that may be obsolete before it even gets to the paper. So at this point in time, I would entertain either a motion forward or a motion table.
I make the motion to the table, uh, traffic study.
I have a motion to table, right, second, second for Stacy. Questions or comments from the board?
The only other thing I would, um, count, and I don't know, like Tyrell mentioned, the traffic study, there'd be a lot in the spring, I mean, you get a lot of pedestrian traffic there. I mean, I see the traffic flow right now, because you have so much more car traffic going on. And I do, I change my route depending on the roads, right? Like I know that I can go a little bit faster if there's not icy roads, and I can take that down the street, or on the Lewis Street, on the Valley. But if I know I can, and I'm gonna take an alternate route and hit Main Street and go along the route into town. So I think almost it would be beneficial to do one both, two different seasons. I know that obviously ups the price too, because of all the extra data entry that you're putting in. But the traffic flow is so much different in our winters than it are in our springs.
As well as, if I may, to elaborate, as well as foot traffic from one school to the other on the path, as we're building Highland Meadows, Phase One, Two, Three, and Four, and there's a hundred and fifty kids that walk from school to school at church times the base of that as well.
I was just looking at that traffic study that you sent me, and it was done in May, like, they didn't have a ton of pedestrians, and then people did at different times of the year, and you know, there's a lot of pedestrians out on that.
Usually if we hit, I mean, for just, you know, although the winter time is horrible, so trying to get that data collection is not gonna get them hurt.
Yeah.
Fall is usually better, but summer starts, you have to find what the study does, and it's like you gotta figure out what happens there.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing that on the motion to table, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion care to table that, move forward as we go. So thank you for the proposal, appreciate the ideas, you know, enhance our future discussion. Okay, so I'm sure that you don't have to move too far away.
No, and I didn't do any maps really for the, the next one for the TA proposal, but we're just trying to get, this kind of led into a discussion on Kalispell and Main Street, and there's a crosswalk.
Yeah, so Kai and I and Clint were already discussing this Prickly Pear project, and then we had a board meeting in January, and Stacy mentioned that crosswalk on Montana at Kalispell. Being a safety concern, I think you had witnessed something in there in the dark this morning that caused concern. And we had, that reminded me that when we opened the East Helena High School ninth grade at EMS, we had another close call with a student at that location, and I actually discussed it in a board meeting, and discussed it with the city. I went back to talk to Kevin Orr at City of Helena to see if they had made any changes to the crosswalk at that point in time. He dug up the traffic study that the city had, had done, and, but nothing else had really changed there. Then, another strange twist of fate, I happened to sit on the Metropolitan Planning-
Planning Association.
Organization, which is newly formed last fall, which is basically a transportation planning area that encompasses most of what you would call the Helena metropolitan area, if that kind of sounds funny. But we fall within that, and the MPO itself is very new, and just kind of getting their feet under them in terms of studying transportation in the greater area. But one thing that came up in one of our discussions back in December was they were gonna have some TA grant funding available to award, and, and it's specific to this area, and, and that, at the time, when it was discussed, I was like, well, I can't really think of another TA grant project for East Helena. Well then, Stacy mentioned the crosswalk, and all of a sudden it hit me that this might be a viable project that we could submit. So I talked to Ty Wine Gardner at City of Helena, who's heading up the MPO. He heard me out, thought, yeah, that's a, a pretty good proposal, especially as it relates to student safety. So I talked with Kaiya and company at Staley to see if they would be interested in helping us to get organized to submit for that grant. I believe, did you ever get a timeline out of him on?
I think they're looking, from what I understand, in March.
Yeah, so I mean, we're talking a really short timeline if we want to get out in front of this one. And so, the, the proposal for this is just to, and I'll let you talk a little bit about the proposal. One of the things that we would work on between now and the application period would be trying to get the City of East Helena on board. would be trying to get the City of East Helena on board with us with this application. And part of the reason being, this would be a TA grant that doesn't actually even touch any property that the school district owns. It affects our students and the way they get to and from school. And it affects safety in the community, um, because the number one thing that we're trying to avoid here is a tragedy where a student starts by a vehicle because that will affect everybody in town. Um, and so, uh, I'm gonna let you talk a little bit about what you're proposing here and then we can chat.
So, we've kind of put together a proposal to, this is... Let's see how, I'm doing, Lady who put the proposal together had it, it's not here, so I'm like, trying to work on this. They, we're, so we're looking at... See, I feel like I'm nervous when I'm having a hard time with this, I'm sorry. So we're proposing to look at that crosswalk at Kalispell and Main Street. We know that there's dangers right there. There's a lot of kids that possibly could be crossing. I know they did a traffic study with MBT and showed that there wasn't anything to do, like an R, RFP there.
It met warrants for RFPs.
Pardon me, it didn't meet the warrants? Oh, in the study, I looked at it, said that it did, I guess. Yeah, it's, um...
I don't know.
The reason why I think we couldn't build it is because of the necessary, like, AIA ramps and the grades and everything to meet that. That's where the, the rub came because of the thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars in, you know, concrete and stuff just for the crossing itself because the grades are rough on that one side. Um, but, you know, the RFPs themselves were, I believe, because of the school students and the way we conduct our study that count vulnerable users, students are counted, vulnerable children, they didn't have warrants for an RFP. Um, I can verify, it should be under the recommendation, it's just there's some, there's some challenges. Infrastructure challenges, I guess, to make that happen.
So this is where we're proposing to help put together the grant and work with the, um, East Helena and Helena, the State of Montana. There's like, right there, it's like right at the county line too, so you've got the county, the state, and all of the cities that have to come together in a partnership to help right there. It's kind of an unusual situation.
It is, it's very unusual due to property ownership and the fact that it's the old state highway. Um, and then, I think one of the questions that has to be pushed out is, is that even the right spot for a crossing? Um, because of some things Tyrell just brought up and, uh, one thing that Kevin O'Hor brought up to me was that the city had actually come up with a crossing down the Lane Avenue and then extended the sidewalk on the, over the north side, um, back over to Kalispell. So kids could get there that way and that, that might make more sense, but that's got to be all part of this conversation moving forward. There's no way we could sort that out before tonight.
That's part of what the TA grant would do too, is so we have to get everybody involved. So this is just asking, knowing that in the future that you could be, having to be a participant in this, just being able to get approval for us to, getting everybody together to see if this is something like we could apply for the TA grant. The TA grant would be more to dual than that one. So right now, we just need to be able, this is a proposal to do the application for the TA grant, not for the work itself.
And so this amount on here, this is an estimate, or?
Yeah, well, this is how much that we propose that it'll cost to do the grant application.
Okay, and, um... Okay, so that would get us through the application phase?
That would get you through the application phase.
And then at that point, you would have an idea of what our required match is going to be? And if the City of East Helena was willing to step up and be a player with us on that and possibly do a cost share? Or if that's even possible at your TA, because we're, we still have to sort that out too.
I think, as long as, yeah, I can't, we will have to sort that out because I can't remember what exactly the requirements are.
Yeah, there may need to be a lead agency on that.
There have to be, yeah, and because you guys don't own property and you just have an interest in it. But as a school district, if you're doing something for the safer routes to school, you've got the interest, but you don't own the land. So we would need to be, it'd have to be a partnership with everybody.
And I guess that's kind of where my frustration, my concern is on this is that we're the ones that are probably the most impacted, but we're the ones that have the least. Yeah, we don't have as much, we don't have as much, or we're, the, the state of Montana gets, uh, an increase in, or enhancement on Main Street. The city gets an enhancement on Kalispell or Lake, whichever they might look at it. Um, so as far as the systems agreement, it goes to every agency except ours. What it does do is it does help the safety of our kids, but we have a new safety discussion. And so, you know, when we're paying twelve thousand or possibly paying twelve thousand dollars, um, yeah, I'm sure that the rest of them would love to have the schools put that bill. And in fact, they probably love us to pay for this, uh, actual, but I'm not sure whether or not it's actually our place to do it.
So I, I agree with you and, um, share those same concerns. I think you can make that same argument for every TA grant we've ever gone on.
But with the TA grant, you're right, you're right.
I mean, we don't own any of those sidewalks.
They did directly connect to ours.
They do, they're, yeah, they are. And that, that's the, that's the separating factor is this.
I guess, I don't have as much of a mission funding for the grant application because it's, it is probably the most impactful process for us and then for sure. But when it comes to being the lead agency and being responsible for that cost share, I'm a little bit more hesitant on that standpoint because again, we don't have that to reason. So, you know, I would almost in some respects be like, okay, I'd be good with maybe this. But the only way we're going to get something is if the City of East Helena gets on board as the lead agency. Now whether or not we build a cost share between us and them outside of the TA application is maybe an agreement that is outside of that for the TA application and stuff just because that could get interesting trying to write those. And whether or not it's a leg, um, in a local agency, let or whatever, or if it's actually done by a leader or not, that could be something that changes the way that dynamic is there. So, again, the twelve thousand dollars, I think is, in some respects to me, is money well spent to get the application. If we can get the grant, that is potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars of benefit on kids that does provide the crossing that is needed. From what I remember, it was, like you said, it's needed, it would be a huge benefit to all parties involved. And it would kind of finalize that last leg of school in some respects. I don't know, we continue with what we've done with connecting the other schools together. But I don't know if I want to be on the hook for the other sixty percent of thousand dollars that then comes into it.
Right. Yeah, and I, I think that's the, the direction that I would take with it too. This, this will give the ball moment. Um, but you'll see, you're going to see this on another board agenda probably in March or April to determine what the final outcome of all those conversations have been. And that's going to be something that the board can digest. But I, I just, it, this came together really fast and, and because of the, the window that they're talking about for the MPO version of the TA grant, I felt like we should try and get out in front of it. Um, because it has been an ongoing concern. And I guess just to be honest with you, I don't know how I can sleep at night if something happened to a kid there and we just sat on our hands and been doing. Um, so that's, that's why I wish.
I guess I'd actually, if we're on the PLO, we might be able to jump in ahead of, before everybody knows.
That's kind of, but I mean, the only, there's not a lot of agencies that can submit. Um, and the only other project out there that I know of that might get submitted is a recreational trail in North, I think it's called North Gate or North Star Park somewhere out in the North Valley. Um, so, and I feel like this, because of the student safety factor, has got to be close to the top of the heap in terms of what you can purchase.
So this fee is not like a lump sum amount. We'll charge, you know, out with our time and our expenses. So, you know, part of this, beginning of this is going to East Helena, is going to the county and seeing whether or not they're interested in becoming the lead agency and being able to, you know, put that in place before we ever even get to the grant writing. Because I don't think, we can't be writing a grant without their permission as being the lead agency. So if we just get to the point where we're just having the meetings and we talk with them and they're just like, it is a no-go, we don't want to do it, then all the board would be paying for it just that time. So, and maybe at that point, you know, we can discuss with East Helena too and the county, cost sharing and even writing a grant. I mean, I think that there's options there to be doing things like that. Even the previous study that we're looking at that we've tabled too, it's like, they want to extend East Thurman. I feel like, is that going to them and saying, hey, you guys want to do that? Do you want to fund this study? I mean, it's just kind of giving you options for us to be able to go and talk to them. But knowing that we need your input and your approval to be able to do this for the schools too. So if you don't have your approval, your buy-in for it, then there's no... East Helena is not going to be able to put in for this TA grant either. We need, you know, support from everybody.
With the TA grants, I was going to say there's like deadlines, like if we were to get a order, the city can't sit on their titles like they are with Valley Drive and be like, oh, yeah, let's do it. And then all this, and, and down the road.
Yeah, no, they would have to, as part of the application process, as some of the... And TA grants take whatever one, the last one, which is at least four years, but, um, but it's time it got built, but yeah.
It was like, I was thinking, you can go back and do another partnership with this.
Right. But, and like Kai was saying, we might be able to convince the city to, to, to support it. But I'd be surprised if that happens. Um, and like she also said, if they just look at it and say, there's no way we can do it, we don't, then just drop it. But that way we put some effort out there and let them know again that we think this is a good solution.
I think it's worth drawing out the grant and start a conversation. We spent the forty-four hundred bucks, well, it's a, the first model, I don't think that's a score.
Well, Tyrell, that sounded dangerously close to a motion, so I would entertain a motion if you're so willing.
I would make a motion to accept the proposal from Staley not to exceed twelve thousand.
Okay.
And get the authority to, and to cancel, I guess, contract or whatever, or sign.
I don't know if that's worth it.
Or terminateations from the city or whatever, I mean, if it's in...
It's not feasible, right?
It's not, yeah. Is that, sorry, Joel, is that okay?
Um, I have no idea what you're saying, what you're saying, I would have been a lot of shit saying.
Um, I make a motion to accept the proposal from Staley Engineering not to exceed twelve thousand. And Dan has the authority to terminate the contract with this one, in the...
The proposal to do the grant application?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have a motion, I try to accept the proposal from Staley Engineering for the grant application and allow Superintendent Christmas to cancel it anytime, and not to exceed twelve thousand. And not, not to exceed twelve thousand.
Not to exceed twelve thousand.
Okay, sounds like one of the, have a second, Stacy? Questions and comments from the board?
I was going to the guys that we're going to, we're going to go to the city, East Helena, this Clark County, the State of Montana, find out if they're going to commit with us or themselves. Because it's not really our territory, property, even that's why. Or we, like...
Right, like this, we have to go with them and see who we can have be the lead agency. Since you would not be able to be the lead agency putting in for the TA grant, from what I understand. So, we would, I have to figure that out completely, I guess, for the TA grants to see exactly what their requirements are, especially since the MPO does not, have not even put together their, their programs. We're just kind of going, uh...
Yeah, we'll have to get it, Ty, figure it out.
Yeah, we're kind of assuming that it's going to be close to what the TA grants are right now, that the MPO will adopt.
That structure.
That structure.
We're not going to be stuck with any more costs?
It's not taking, I mean, you know.
I mean, like, they assess the grant.
You can still pull out.
Yeah, we can't refuse it.
You know, and get paid for it, maybe.
Right.
And I think that's, that's definitely something that would need to be figured out both in the grant application process so that we know how much is going to be your match. And if any, how much would be sitting in East Helena, all that stuff has to come out of you, what the expenses are and who's paying for it and what they're going to be.
Typically, TA grants are thirteen percent of the, um, and that's all fits are a hundred thousand dollars, thirteen percent is what would be required. But the grant pays for the feds, so that the grant comes from the feds and that would be the rest of it. So, it's a pretty good thing, but I think we paid about sixty-seven, sixty-eight thousand for the sidewalk. Probably a six-hundred, seven-thousand dollar front.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate, appreciate the patience.
Yeah. We probably should have told you approximately, I think she wanted that you set the prior.
It's been very, very understanding, worrying all about your school.
People say that, but I'm not sure.
I enjoy it, it's, it's nice to understand the community. Thank you.
We have a, we have a high school trustee that joins us and she says she's very interested in what we do. She enjoys it, I question her sincerity.
Because she do it all the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I, if somebody wants to take a vital break, I don't have any problems recessing for three minutes.
Yeah.
I think it's, all my likes. I think that, um, you know, was for attending. That right there, he was, um, he was like, it was his first, it's a good night.
Well, that's just a fair attitude.
We finished over that question.
Yeah, sorry.
I'll do the, right? Off the chair, but off her, it was, um, it was some, some time in HR.
Oh, you don't? Um, I.
Sorry, I didn't mean to make everybody sorry.
Oh, yeah.
No, but, I hope you'll get it all.
Do these need to be stacked?
I don't think I've ever used toilets here, so it's like, oh dear.
Yep.
Even for short people. Ever, and all my kids are talking, hold your ass.
Yeah, I'm ready to run.
Oh, you should have one.
Because it has a receipt and graduate at the bottom.
No, I guess.
Okay.
That makes a lot more sense to me.
Well, just make more of this, it's all free.
Okay.
Thank you. She did it then. Yeah. So your little, I think it'd be more impactful than that. It's something she prints out of her brain. It comes from the chest. Sorry, it's so hard to, I think it is. Do you think she, do you think I should just, I said, okay, so what do you want? It's like, yeah.
Church is out, you ready? Church's calling.
It's always twenty, it's, it's less than a, right. Right. Okay. That one, I, yeah. I'm just telling you, she will, it won't happen for a while, she will do that. If you can get to, or I can ask to, to send the. Well, it's, I'm ready to do it. I just, I just don't think it's, I just. Oh, when she sends it to, when she sends it to the other side, then. Yeah, there you go. And you just want one for, maybe, yeah, I'm wanting. I think they just need to, but I understand. But how, how they don't know that?
Okay, all right, well now, we're back in session again.
Wait, can we ask questions about the transportation stuff?
No.
Just had a few more questions.
Next item on the agenda is a mental understanding for a parent.
Okay, like we said, we talked about resignations, we've lost multiple paras in the last five weeks of school hours since Christmas break. I believe we're down five total positions, we're almost down six. And that's on top of the positions that were open already before those folks retired. So, what's going on here is this MOU, if approved tonight, would be in place for the rest of the school year, and I'll try to cut to the chase here, what it does is it sets up a situation where a teacher who chooses to fill in for what a paraprofessional would normally be doing during their prep time, during the teacher's prep time, then they can do that during their prep time, and then we understand that they would prep after school gets out, outside of working hours, and we're gonna pay them twenty-three dollars an hour, which is the hourly professional rate that we pay teachers in the district for the time that they are doing the prepping, which is the same amount of time that would have been their prep time. So basically, we've got some staff members that want to help out, but in order for them to do that, we can't just pay them for their prep time, because that's already paid time. So, we're basically allowing them to move their prep later and after school hours and get paid for it. And this will help our teachers out, because they can make a little bit of money, but it'll help our students out, because we'll get some additional adults in the room to assist and help them some.
Does it bump into any overtime or?
Not the teachers, because they don't qualify for overtime, as they're exempt from these. Good question. And we believe the money to pay the teachers for this is gonna come out of agency savings from the open par position.
Are the par positions spread throughout the whole district, or are they like?
We've got open positions in every building except Bradley, you have, yeah, okay.
Is there maybe a couple that's not sparing that way?
Are there, are there any ramifications with the other unit? This is an MOU related to the HSA, but is there any approval that we need to get from the HSA?
For a teacher to do a par's job?
Yes.
I talked to Michelle about it, she thought it sounded like a great idea, but have we ever talked about any kind of a formal agreement? I can't recertify that.
I, I, I don't have any problems with the MOU. I just don't want someone coming back to us later and saying, yeah, agreeing with us because we didn't get approval for it in the other unit.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up with her tomorrow, but I don't think we get it, it's her issue there, I think right now, basically, the way she said it was, we'd welcome the help.
Can I request money to take place on that slate, see?
No, we, we're advertising, and theoretically, let's say fourteen paras fall out of the sky, we hire tomorrow, then.
We would need this, right.
And that's kind of why we set the sunset at the end of the school year, because usually we get the bulk of our para hiring, if there is such a thing, or somehow.
Okay, so according to this evening, we have draft memorandum of understanding with the HSA, and I'm gonna take a motion to.
I'll make a motion. He's gonna do whatever he says.
It's actually to approve the memo of understanding. That was Kirsten.
You guys are talking so hard.
That's right.
Because I turned my head and it was talking.
That's right. So, you can do your motion.
Uh, to approve the MOU to allow teachers to send their professional position during their.
Questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments for the public? Say no, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Make sure that it's, here we go. Okay, uh, number eight on our agenda, is consideration of resolution two forty, which is a call for a mail ballot election.
Okay, I asked Jill to put this together, we could wait till the March board meeting, but if that deadline is.
Pretty quick.
So it made sense to sneak this on the February agenda, this is simply calling, we have two trustee positions open, and if we were to decide before the March deadline to pursue a mail levy, that would also go on as mail ballot election. If we don't do a mail levy, and if we don't get any other filings for the trustee positions, we could actually enable the society to cancel the election and save ourselves a nice little pot of money.
Okay, according to board, we have resolution number two forty, do I have the motion to approve such motion? But second.
Second?
So if I tie around, second, please Kirsten. Questions, comments from the board? Questions, comments from the public?
Whose, whose seats are open?
Marshes and myself. And as of today, we're gonna look at applicants. You laugh, you laugh at it like just so.
I suppose not, people just banging down the door.
Not yet.
Okay. Well, now the news is out, right?
Between that and para applications, we're not rushing it.
So, say no further questions, comments, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed by saying no, motion carries. Thank you. That concludes that. So, in a matter of following the NID, I am supporting its evaluation of our district's business manager, and according to NCA two thousand, as the presenting officer, I have determined that the man is an individual privacy, who exceeds the merits of the public service. That, and going on to an executive session, at the completion of this NID and all actions resulting from evaluation will be addressed in over session. Will that be standard, you bring it in.
Thanks, everybody.
You change, it's, it's sent to you.
Oh, thank you.